I'd like to call the order this special workshop for September 29th, 30th, 2019. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Phil Crowell, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we've outlined the process for tonight's agenda, we're looking forward to a good dialogue and conversation as we move forward. We do have the next 30 minutes set aside for public comment. I'll just go over a few of the ground rules and guidelines that we've kind of put up for this evening. If you don't have that, they're provided on the table over there for more information. But we have set aside for each speaker will be given three minutes to share their views. We ask everybody adhere to this time limit to be fair to all the speakers. We will be putting a timer on the screen just so you know how long you have gone so that you can stay within your three minutes. Speakers may not give their time to other people, it'll just be for each speaker. Speakers should line up along this wall at the entrance of the council just so we can be efficient when one speaker is done, just so we can make sure we're using the full 30 minutes. Please use the microphone at the podium so everyone can hear you well, and please provide your full name and address prior to sharing your remarks. We also ask that they be relevant to the workshop topic tonight, which is the Agriculture and Resource Protection Ordinance. Speakers will just provide their remarks to the chair. There will not be an exchange of conversation during the public comment. The mayor and councilors or staff may address specific comments or questions during the workshop or at a later time. So I'd ask if anyone is ready to be the first speaker, and then other speakers could please add an objections. We can do inner directions first, that would be great. As the mayor said, my name is Phil Crowell, Assistant City Manager.
Belinda Gary, Auburn City Councilor at Large. Holly Lasagna, Ward 1, City Councilor.
Alfreda Fornier, City Councilor, Ward 4.
Bob Hayes, Council, Ward 2.
Andy Titus, City Council, Ward 3.
Jason Lebec, Mayor.
David Young, City Councilor at Large.
Leroy Walker, Ward 5.
Eric Cousins, Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development.
Rosemary Moser, GIS Manager.
Peter Creighton, City Manager.
Audrey Knight, City Planner.
Brett Sawyer, Economic Development.
Karen Scammon, City Assessor.
Great, thank you, everyone. And if our first speaker wants to go to the podium, then I would ask if you are planning on speaking, please go ahead and line up.
Good evening, my name is Jane Costlow. I live at 104 Fourth Street in Auburn, and I did want to make clear that I'm a member of the cities, a new member of the city's Conservation Commission, but my remarks are just purely my own. So I want to thank the city council for taking the time to deliberate so carefully about potential changes in the ag zone. I do not regard your careful deliberations as stalling, but as essential and appropriate given the potential impacts and the many questions that have arisen. I'm not opposed to considering changes in the ag zone that will make farming more possible. However, I am opposed to making changes that would open up the zone to housing development and increased sprawl. There are many reasons to avoid sprawl, but I want to add a few more to your list. These boil down to two huge issues with local ramifications: climate change and the loss of species, which we read about in the paper last week, which over the last 50 years has led to the death of 3 billion birds. Maine's new climate commission is now beginning the process of considering how Maine will reach an ambitious but necessary decarbonization goal by 2045. How we in Auburn decide about the ag zone will bear on both the loss of animal habitat and also how communities can thrive without destroying the atmosphere. This doesn't have to be doom and gloom. This is a huge opportunity for smart, innovative, sustainable responses. Here's one quote from yesterday's Sun Journal from Christina Egan, who's head of the Greater Portland Council of Governments. So quoting Ms. Egan, "In order for us to make the transition to more climate-friendly transportation system, we need to think about building more affordable housing near jobs and connecting our village and city centers with rapid public transportation. To boost economic development and public health, we need great downtowns, and we need to plan ahead to absorb growth into those places that are more sustainable for our society. In other words, build the urban core. We shouldn't be encouraging growth in Auburn outside the core already designated in our long-range plans for development. Auburn has been visionary about this, setting aside land to remain lightly settled and lightly used. Any changes made to our existing zoning need to keep these large-scale contexts in mind." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Camille Parrish. I'm representing the Good Food Council of Lewiston, Auburn in my comments. I'm reading from a letter that we sent to the city council or the Conservation Commission and Planning Board on May 20th, and I thought it was good to review it at this time. "The Good Food Council of Lewiston, Auburn wants to present you with our observations regarding the Agriculture and Resource Protection Ordinance review you are undertaking. We have focused our comments on the benefits that access to prime farmland and an inclusive, thoughtful process of decision-making can have for Auburn citizens. We hope these points will assist you in your deliberation and plans for the next steps. Number one, the Good Food Council recommends forming agricultural advisory board before making any changes to the zoning and ordinance. There are other bodies that have come to the conclusion that is necessary to form an advisory before making any changes to the zoning and ordinance. These include the Ad Hoc Committee on Agriculture and Resource Protection, the Planning Board, Stephanie Gilbert from the Farm Viability and Farmland Protection Specialists, and the Good Food Council supports this approach and strongly encourages the city council to pursue it. Number two, grant the Agricultural Advisory Board significant decision-making authority. The Ag Board would be able to bring together the research, disparate processes, and considerations in a thorough and deliberate process. This body would also be able to respond to changing conditions over time. We encourage placement of the Ag Advisory Board in a position to provide expert guidance and play a significant role in decision-making. Number three, seek wide participation in this process from as many Auburn residents as possible. Decisions about this zone will impact the future of the city's natural resources now and into the future. We advocate for increased communications to residents, both within and outside the ag zone, about this process and decision-making that continues to be thoughtful and transparent to ensure a widely-supported solution. Four, have ag zone modernization be informed by public input from the city's comprehensive planning process. Discussions around modernizing this zone are almost aligned with the city's timeline for creating the next Auburn comprehensive plan, which is legally binding basis for city ordinances. We advocate the city aligns the two efforts, ag zone modernization and the new comp plan process, before making any changes to this zone. Number five, and finally, couple ag zone modernization with complementary community and economic development strategies that support local food and farming. Auburn's ag zone has protected farmland and has, and has not supported farming. I will stop there. Thank you.
That letter is also available on the city's website, it was posted up today.
Thank you. Michelle Melarano, Trap Road. So the reality is, yes, of course, changes are necessary in the Ag RP zone, but this particular attempt to force any changes through right now is absolutely not the way to do it. Why is there such a rush to get this done before the Ag Commission is in place, or before the survey results are public, or before the comprehensive plan, or before the election? As you are now aware, the recommendations before you are not the result of the original ad hoc committee, nor are the result of the MagARP group. Unfortunately, you're not able to see how that vote was disallowed since the video footage is strangely cut short just prior to the contentious end of that particular meeting. If the original ad hoc committee recommendations hadn't been ignored, the permanent Ag Commission would now have been in place for well over a year. They would have been dedicated to working on a common sense changes to the Ag RP zoning laws. They would have been working closely with the Planning Board, and that progress would have been brought before the city council. The mayor has interfered with that process of establishing that commission. The formation of the permanent Ag Commission must be completed before any changes are made, and it must not consist of individuals who are handpicked by the mayor only. Why is it, oh no, sorry, what if, just hypothetically here, what if I had been on the MagARP group? What if I'd been the chair of that group? And what if I, as a single citizen of Auburn, had disallowed a final vote of that group and had then put forth my personal recommendations? As a chair, maybe that would have been okay for me to do, maybe not, but it never would have been allowed to progress to this point. The only reason that we have utilized such a huge amount of everyone's time is because of the demands of one Auburn citizen who happens to be Auburn's mayor. It seems to me that this could very well be a misuse of his position and his power as mayor. I'd like to detail one example of what could potentially happen if the mayor gets his way. This is based on area that I know best, which is in back of my property. My composting operation sits in the middle of 46 acres, and it requires biofilters and a visual barrier, and much more than 10 acres for public security, if you will, and privacy. If the mayor and someone like Peter Moore gets their way, and they build roads on Mr. Moore's property, similar to the ones that were allowed on the corner of Danville Corner Road and Woodbury Hill Road, potentially 50 additional lots going into that 800 acres, 800-plus acres of property, then the 10 acres that could be used to operate my ag business will no longer be sufficient to have that sort of a barrier or biofilters. I'm certain that you recognize and have given great consideration to the fact that the recommendations before you are those of one person. I'm confident that you understand the enormity of the situation, that not one group has endorsed the mayor's plan, which is in great contrast to the numerous professional entities that have issued statements that do not support this plan. And the overwhelming majority of Auburn citizens who have spoken publicly at meetings have done so in opposition. I'm asking you to please vote on the heavily-weighted side of those professional entities and legal opinions, and in support of your Auburn citizens with the best interests of Auburn's farmlands and forest and natural resources.
We'll ask for the next speaker to come forward, please. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Beal. I have a house on Shepley Street, which is not the subject of my comments. Rather, it's a 93-acre woodlot that I own up on Dillingham Hill, which is the basis for my interest in the agriculture and forested areas of the city. I'm concerned about the way that the drafting has developed because of some inconsistencies in the definitions section, which is 60.2 in the proposed amendments. That section specifically states that agricultural products does not include trees grown and harvested for forest products, for the first time breaking apart forested land from the general inclusion in agriculture and resource protection land. But yet, with that basic statement that forest products are not included in agricultural products, the first underlined paragraph below that in Section 60.2 says that the Agricultural and Resource Protection District is further defined to include five sub-paragraphs. There are actually five in number, although one of them is, two of them are double-numbered three, which needs some correction. Perhaps that's already been addressed, but there are two paragraph threes. Four of those five paragraphs include specific reference to forestry, forest products, long-term resource protection, conservation such as forestry, the state tree growth law, tree easement law, and reforestation. So that's some substantial inconsistency with the first paragraph, which excludes forestry and forest products and forest land from the agricultural zone. That needs to be addressed. The subject of forested land itself is dealt with in only a two-line sub-paragraph on the following page of the proposed amendments, which simply states that forested land is land which is used in the growth of trees, but doesn't include ledge swamp or other excluded specific areas. So that's left forested land without really much of a definition. Perhaps that's because it's covered in a number of state laws, but if we're going to have 85% of the area in the Agriculture and Resource Protection Zone, which is forested, not be further defined, that seems like an omission. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll certainly look at those discrepancies.
I'm Roger Garcia. I live on Pendlecombe Road. I've been a farmer there for 40 years, and this is what I think you're doing right now. If you do anything, return the land back to the people and let the people decide what they do with it. As it is right now, I can't join any of these programs to get land for my in future, get the money to keep the farm going, because you stole our property way back without giving us a dime for it. And that's all I'm going to say, because I'm blown.
Thank you.
My name's William Sylvester. I live at 1128 Riverside Drive, Auburn. I got three issues. One was the legacy issue and legacy cost residential for the community and word about the survey. Legacy issues, I wrote a letter to one of these committees that I've been on about legacy stuff, and it hasn't gone anywhere, but it seems like a lot of the housing issues, which is the root of the problem with the ag zone, is housing, not so much agriculture. And there may be five, there may be 10 legacy issues in this town where families want to give a piece of property to their son, daughter, neighbor, whatever. I think if those were resolved, maybe a lot of this other stuff would go away. And I can dig that old letter up, too, probably, if anybody wants to see it. The thing I want to talk about on the residential, cost of residential, that thing that we've floated around so many times with a $1.16 cost of residential development, no matter how dense it is, as opposed to 30 cents or 37 cents for ag or, well, manufacturing, the business district. If you get the full report, on the fourth page of that, it shows Maine. The only town that's listed in there is Bethel, and it's six cents is what it costs in Bethel for ag land. So now Bethel isn't that much different than our ag zone here in Auburn. Yandere Skoggin River runs through there, there's a lot of interval land, there's a lot of farm. Bethel is different in that it's steep, it's rocky. You get back out of that interval land, and it's really not worth too much. But that is another number, and it's at least Maine, it's not a national average. And the survey, we started to make a survey in the MagARP group, and we didn't get one. I'd like to see any survey that is out there available, used. I think the survey that Bates did had a lot of good questions, agricultural, housing, what are the futures here? I think it was very appropriate, and I hope we can use that in our planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rodney Hill, 67 Trap Road. I have 90 acres on my property, and it's been in the family since 1952. The house is from the mid-1800s, before there was a city of Auburn. I'm an electrician, I've been an electrician all my life. I don't make any income from agriculture, and for the last 70 years, nobody else has either at that property. The only agricultural activity that I perform is mowing my lawn, and our ordinance would not allow me to actually build a structure to put the mower in. I have two young boys. I grew up in Minnet because my father was not able to build on our land. He built in Minnet, I grew up in Minnet. I'm so happy to be back in Auburn, I bought my grandparents' place. I love it here, my kids go to excellent schools. I grew up in Minnet School, I don't ever want to go back there. The land is really not suitable for, like, subdivision into 20 lots or anything like that, and that's certainly not my goal. But at some point, it'd be wonderful if some generation in my family, maybe even one of my sons, could build a house on my land. It's 90 acres, you know, because the ordinance does not prevent sprawl, it compounds it. We build in Turner, Livermore, and we drive to Auburn. People, I'm an electrician, I have never wired a new house in Auburn. I almost finished one in Buckfield that's almost in Sumner, they commute to Auburn. I've wired them in Livermore Falls, Lisbon Falls, all commuters, Durham, all commuters into Auburn. They drive on our roads, and we build further and further and further away from Auburn, but we can't build right here on our outskirts. There are a whole lot of people, I forget, I shouldn't even cite this because I don't know the facts behind it, but I forget the ratio, but the average married couple, both working in Portland, cannot afford a home in Portland. And they always buy on the outskirts and commute. There are all kinds of people that would like to have a beautiful home on the southern end of Auburn and commute to work, and there's really nothing wrong with that, you know? And I really think honestly that the sprawl has been compounded many times over by this ordinance, it has not been curbed at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Scott Shanahan, 546 Johnson Road, and I also own a piece of property at 200 Lost Valley Road, Lost Valley Ski Area. My family and I purchased Lost Valley Ski Area about four years ago. Quite honestly, I don't want to be here speaking on this subject. Personally, I feel I haven't been in this town long enough to have super-strong opinions on the way the land is used. However, I have three sons, and possibly one of them will be as dumb as me and want to run a ski area 30 years from now. As a business owner in the ag zone, we need, we need some stability and assurance of what we're going to be able to do for long-term planning to use the land. Lost Valley is a ski area because it was terrible farmland, just happens to be in the ag zone, but nobody in their right mind would farm it. I'm here because I'm also concerned with, if you look at the agenda, item B, letter E, reconsider ordinance 60-145B17, equipment industrial use in the ag. I really, that is a pretty small conversation compared to the huge issue that you guys are dealing with. I really don't think it belongs in this conversation. I believe it was put forth by a very small group of citizens who are brutally opposed to it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Chris Carson, 110 Jakes Road, Auburn, Maine. As he pointed out, I think one of the, I was part of the MagARP committee, and one of the things that many towns around here have done is they've looked at, there's a GIS map that's available that shows soils of statewide importance and soils of statewide significance, and several other communities in this area have tried to prohibit in their ag zones people from building on that particular soil, since those are prime soils for farmland. And lastly, I don't want to take up too much time here, I'm just going to pass this out. This was given out to us as part of the MagARP, and this is very interesting, it's a 1986 study by the University of Maine Farmington. Can you back to the mic, please? I'm sorry. It's a 1986 study by the University of Maine Farmington, and it deals with the last time that the city council tried to rezone the agricultural district. And they changed the zoning in, essentially contrary to the opinion of the Planning Board, and you can read that in the study. And a group of citizens took them to court, and the Maine Superior Court actually ruled on Auburn's agricultural zone at the time, and they said that the city council was in error in changing the agricultural zone and needed to proceed with a change to the comprehensive plan first. And so the Maine Superior Court has said very clearly that the comprehensive plan is the guideline for the zoning, and therefore, I think if we want to change the zoning, we ought to look at the comprehensive plan. And for small issues where we have landowners who need an immediate change, we have this Auburn Agricultural Board that's been proposed, and other areas around this area deal with what are called variances to their zoning, which would allow individuals who have, say, seven or eight acres in the agricultural zone, or have a family member that they want to build a house for, to make an application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, my name is Robert Nielsen. I live at 1045 Old Danville Road. I have 34 acres also across the street from my house. It's undeveloped, doesn't have a farm on it. It's in the ag zone, and it's, we keep saying ag zone a lot of times, and I think we omit the other part, natural resource, which is, it's a major watershed, it's south Auburn. It flows into the Royal River Valley, it's the last of this little natural forest, and some people have clear-cut selective harvested logs, some more aggressive than others. Mine is forested, it was selective cut before I purchased it about five, six years ago. It's beautiful land, I really don't want to see anything happen to it, and I don't want to be forced to deforest it, to satisfy anybody's needs, to reclassify what it is. It's actually a watershed. I am experimenting with log farming mushrooms. We have a company called Maine Culinary Mushrooms, my wife and I, and we have a bunch of experimental sections under the canopy of the forest, so to say that my forest isn't a farm is incorrect. It has to stay a forest in order to protect the mushrooms from drying out, they have to stay under the canopy of the trees. Otherwise, I'd have to build buildings and do this all indoors like a lot of people want to do, and then it becomes a whole other entity. I just don't want to, I just want people to consider, when we move forward, we need research, we need information, and I feel like this is being done without any kind of study. I don't believe anyone here is qualified to move forward until all the research is known. There's a sub-development next to me in the rural residential area on Woodbury Hill, and I've watched the animals, they don't know what to do, it's all gone. All the land, all the forests, the trees, all gone. I'm sitting in the last of the forests on this end of Auburn, and trust me, it affected everything. Everything is messed up, the deer don't know what to do, the bird of prey are thinning out, it's really interesting, there's only so much room. And we're also your oxygen, so when you take a breath today, know that it came from probably my woods or someone else's forest around here, so don't promote deforestation and urban sprawl.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Fred Haller, I live on West Auburn Road, I have thirty-nine acres. I want to thank you folks for the job you do. It's not going to be easy because I do favor some mechanism where farmers can give a piece of ground to a close family member to build on. I think that's everybody's goal, everybody kind of likes that idea, but that's, there's a lot, lot more at stake here than just a lot or two for a close family member. This has opened up Pandora's Box, it's really about rezoning and reconsidering how we use maybe forty percent of our city. And that's a big deal, have you heard? I think I'm like a lot of other people who have spoken, I'm concerned about the environment, I'm concerned about unbridled development, I'm concerned about losing the rural nature of our town. Yes, there are pressures here for development, but I'm worried about unbridled, uncontrolled development. So I think all of these issues really need to be looked at before decisions are made. I think that all information available on the subject should be concluded in the evaluation and nothing should be excluded. I think that more time, that we need more time to make a decision on how we're rezoning the rest of our city. We've got to give this very careful consideration and that's your job, but I think you've heard from a lot of people here that it certainly concerns them more than just about a farmer having room to put a family member. This is about the entire city of Auburn for the next, how many years, I don't know, but many generations. And we now have a chance to reevaluate it and re-control it and hopefully you'll do a good job and I wish you well in your efforts. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, my name's Brian Carrier, I live at 32 Constellation Drive. I also was on the mayor's MAGAR committee, I also sit on the planning board. Just a couple of things tonight, I attended the last meeting and I was a little taken back by some of the comments that were made. As I sit here, I look at the elected officials and I look at the city employees and I know that the employees are providing the council with everything that they're being asked for. And in the last meeting, we were talking about checking with other communities to see what they might do and waiting on further studies that might be done and waiting for commissions that might be started or will be started. I think there just needs to be a decision made by the council, which is the body that will end up making this decision, is at what point do you have enough information? I know that the planning board was asked about this, I know that the conservation was asked, agriculture was asked, there were members on the MAGAR committee from all walks of life, farmers, resource, forestry, you know? We have to set a time limit because this cannot be continuing on and on and on. I do realize that it is a decision that should be thought about carefully, but I didn't hear anybody in the committee that we were on talk about unfettered growth. Nobody wants to see unfettered growth in agricultural zone or in forestry, but there needs to be some situations that are addressed and the council is the one that has to address those items. So I would hope that you would at least make some kind of decision, is at what point are you going to cut this off? Because there's always another study, there's always other places that you can look to see where there's more information. But we need to be making a decision about Auburn's agricultural zone and Auburn's resource zone and move that to the forefront because there is agreement on some issues with the ordinance that have to be addressed. The second thing that I would like to say is, at least to the elected officials, I don't always agree with everybody sitting at this table, but I want you to know that I respect you for coming out and doing this job. And the comments that come out of this audience sometimes don't always show the respect that we should have for you people stepping up to do this. It's not a popularity contest, you guys knew it wasn't that. Anybody that runs for this office knows it's not a popularity contest. And I just wanted to say thank you for sitting up here and listening to us.
Thank you. I'd like to stop the public session at this time, I'd look to the mayor and council, it appears we have four more speakers that are in line. If you'd like for that to continue, we could do that and move on with the presentation.
I would like to see it continued on, at least for all those that are in line now. How many are in line right now? I see one, two, three, four, five, six. Can we just claim the six and say go with that?
I was waiting just for it to show up.
So that we have seven.
So I see heads nodding, any other voices? Then we have seven more speakers and we'll continue. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Peter Moore. I'm a landowner on the Jordan School Road and the Pownell Road. I have three important points to make. Number one, the need to reform the ag zone is really a fundamental issue of fairness and constitutional soundness. We have two classes of property owners in the ag zone. Category A, who I'll call the winners, those who can live on their property and are not required to earn any portion of their living from any kind of farming whatsoever. And category B, the losers, those who can only live on their property if they can demonstrate that they earn more than fifty percent of their household income from farming, regardless of the other sources they may have. This is, in my opinion, a blatant form of discrimination of those who may have income from non-farming activities greater than their farming activities. And by the way, it has no bearing on the use of the land, which the ordinance clearly governs. Perhaps even more serious on the unfairness factor is the fact that the property of those in the category A, the winners category, those property owners are grandfathered or exempted from the income test that the losers in category B are subject to, meaning that with the transfer of the title to new owners, those exemptions continue in force, but not so for those in category B. Number two, the ag zone ordinance language was largely influenced by farmers in Auburn at the time the ordinance was enacted in the early 1960s. Remarkably, those farmers saw to it that their properties were exempt from the new ordinance language and no income test was ever to be applied to them or to the successor owners of their property. Any change in the ordinance should sunset the exemptions currently enjoyed by the category A property owners and therefore have all ag zone property owners subject to the same ordinance provisions. This is the only way to ensure fairness in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. It is mostly the owners of these properties, some farming, some not remotely engaged in any form of agriculture, that are largely advocating for continuous restrictions on the ability of farmland owners to live on their land. They strive to convince the city council and the planning board that a few new homes will create a development blight and a land rush in Auburn. May I remind the council, this is item number three, that Auburn has one of the highest tax rates in Maine, you know that clearly. Alone, a deterrent to living here by many and even a larger reason that only modest housing development will ever occur in the city. I think it's been a long time since we've had more than thirty new homes built in the city in any one year.
Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to the next speaker.
Good evening, I'm Shelley Kraszewski, I live on Seventh Street in Auburn. And I just wanted to emphasize again that we are talking about the agriculture and resource protection zone. So just to highlight that our natural resources in that zone really do so many services for our city, so just, I wanted to make sure to say that. And I definitely recognize and appreciate that this conversation has been happening over a number of years and I appreciate the research and work that has gone into thinking about changes that could have a positive effect on the zone. I just think that a robust and concentrated effort in that zone could go a long way in helping these changes happen in an efficient and effective way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Sarah Strong and I live at 33 Whitman Spring Road in Auburn. According to the September 24 Sun Journal, the current proposals for the agricultural and resource protection zone under consideration, in them, there would be quote, "a hundred and thirty-six lots immediately available for subdivision" and quote, "that number would grow to hundreds more based on subsequent land splits over time." This represents a lot of new housing spread over a very large area of land. It does not constitute a couple dozen new farms. It represents, in my opinion, a serious level of sprawl, sprawl that would put our city at risk, its finances and infrastructures, as well as its unique resources. I urge you as city councillors to take the time you need to unite behind common goals, to carefully study and investigate all proposals at hand and to revise and craft new ones as you deem fit, relying on all the available pertinent information. This would not be stalling, this would be doing due diligence as our elected officials. And I thank you and I think everyone in this room joins in thanking you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'm here tonight in my capacity as a representative of Bates College and our community-engaged research program. I wanted to share with you that I've spoken with Professor Eames and he is available to share his research within a week and has reached out to city staff and to members of the council and planning board and conservation commission to share those results. I just wanted to make that information known to you because I know that there have been many requests for additional research and information tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Bob Malorania, Danville. Interesting, the previous speaker, obviously we don't have all the information yet. I'd rather than speak about the pros and cons of the issue, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process. The process seems to be the mayor scheduling weekly meetings for the council to go over his agricultural proposal. It appears to be almost a tactic to push them in that direction, if they're finally tired of hearing of it, they want to go on to another subject. Council has refused to do that. That is very much appreciated. It's a bullying tactic, thank you for not giving in to that. We have some decisions to make and hopefully they'll be done rationally and as information comes in, rather than just wearing you down. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jeannie Locke, I live on Royal River Road. I have been there since 1984. I live alone, I have only eight acres, less than eight acres. And right now, this ordinance is protecting a well, my well, that is on a non-conforming lot next, adjacent to my property. These changes to the ordinance have me upset because there's a part in there that says about building, buildings, non-conforming lot sizes, used to be under ten acres or five, it used to be you could sell off parcels of five acres. This is a three-acre parcel. It was never enforced, the people knew about it, that were there before, and now I'm stuck with this. And this, one of the changes says no building to be erected on less than, changed from ten acres to three acres. That parcel is 3.1, I'm concerned. And it's owned by someone who, I worked for the Department of Environmental Protection for twenty-two years and I worked in New York for Environmental Services for ten years. And this person that sold this and split up this property was known to the department for years of breaking all kinds of environmental rules. So I'm concerned that, one, the enforcement actions were never, nothing was ever enforced. And what does it mean by, there's a phrase in there that says, "end of sunset clauses on grandfathered houses pre-built 1964" and to define enforcement options, I don't know what that means. And my house is on, was a dot on the map in 1849 that's over in the county, the old county building before Auburn was incorporated. So I see out there being on the outskirts of New Gloucester, Auburn, that things are not being enforced and I'm concerned about what this actually means. I agree with Michelle that I think this is done in a hurry and I agree with Mr. Mills, I have similar issues to him about land use, you know, him being an electrician. I have set aside my property through the National Wildlife Foundation as a certified wildlife habitat. It probably means nothing to you people here, but because I only own eight acres, I don't qualify for state farming and state assistance and other state kind of protection rules because I don't have enough property. This is the size that I bought when I moved into this town. I'm originally from Portland, I'm a Mainor through and through, I love the environment, I want to protect it, I don't think it's all about growth, we shouldn't always be growing, we need to protect our resources like the woods, which do supply us oxygen and water.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the public session.
Oh, we have one more. Kathy. Seven. Yeah. He was sitting.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. Kathy Shaw, Valley View Farms, Sopers Mill Road. And I really don't have anything startling or earth-shaking to tell you tonight, except that I appreciate each and every person, pro and con, that has come to these meetings and especially filled this room tonight. This is an important, important issue that we all need to think clearly about and we can talk about the environment and people will say, "Oh, aren't you just out there hugging trees?" We need to. We need to start thinking about our trees, our water, our land. I'm one of the lucky ones. I was able to buy my farm in 1995. My house has been on that piece of property since the early 1800s and it has all of the struggles and joys that an old Volandown farmhouse has. Before I bought this property, it was owned by a couple who used to summer at the farm and winter in Florida. And it was pretty and it was cute, but it wasn't farmed. And the reason that it wasn't farmed is that it's hard land. It grows great rocks, we've got beautiful stone walls, but it's a struggle to get a reasonable crop. And in our current economic and climate conditions that we have, I have great years and I have struggling years. Most of our good ag land in this city is gone. It's been taken up with houses or large industrial zones. It's gone. We won't get that back. That's a crime because new houses will not feed us. I appreciate everyone's time and attention, whether you agree with me or not, it's an important issue that I'm really, really glad that everybody has taken the time to sit and talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. So now that concludes our public session, so we'll move to our presentation.
Brian, I'm going to use the mic. I need to make sure it's on.
Turn it on.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
From that?
He's got to go.
Ah. I've got the on button on. No, no.
I think it's working now, okay.
No, no.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you very much. Citizens and interested observers who are here tonight, this is an important issue, as Kathy Shaw just said. I grew up in Aruista County. I picked potatoes when I was a kid, worked in a potato house, picked rocks during the summertime when I was in high school. Agriculture is important. We're going to try and provide a presentation this evening from the staff that will be helpful to the mayor and the council and the community. We're going to focus on the proposed amendments, but we also need to try and answer questions that came up from the mayor and the council during the last session under category of ideal outcomes. Let's go ahead, Rosemary. Meeting objectives, the continuation of the discussion from September 23. We want to talk about the 2010 comprehensive plan as background. As I said, discuss ideal outcomes and try to set a course of action. So the 2010 comprehensive plan regarding the ag zone is very informative. It's an important document. I won't read it verbatim here, but the ag zone objective is to preserve the agricultural heritage in the community and try to maintain the economic value of that land. The rural district is intended to serve as a land reserve. The residential uses should continue to be limited to accessory residential development. This is direct from the comprehensive plan. Criteria should be based on updated standards that consider today's economic realities. The next slide. So it's a picture of Auburn. There are three land use policies that are important to this discussion. Growth areas, where most growth and development will occur. Limited growth areas, where already it's mostly developed with limited infill and redevelopment. And then restricted or non-growth areas, which is unsuitable or undesirable for development. You can see from the screen where these areas are. The growth areas are the orange areas, and then the limited growth areas are the yellow areas, and restricted or non-growth areas are primarily in the ag zone. I'm going to ask Eric Cousins and Audrey Knight if they want to expand a little bit on what I've said already.
I think you've covered it quite well. This map really attempts to break down the land areas within the city into these three categories before it goes on to more specific land use designations for each of these three
Thank you. The next slide shows a little more detail on the land use plan per the comprehensive plan. The land use plan has identified areas for specific growth. The comprehensive plan should be the primary resource when considering changes to zoning. When the first mayor ad hoc committee was created under former mayor Labonte a couple of years ago, after I became city manager, as a result of that process, I think it's fair to say that some of the direction from the comprehensive plan was slowed down because of the ag study and the continuing discussion about the ag study. You can see there are future land use designations on areas that could be rezoned in the future regarding the ag zone. The reason I think this is important, and that we think it's important in terms of staff, is when you look back the past 50 years or so with the ag zone, the areas that have changed in the ag zone were changed by city councils that saw areas where they wanted to have more housing or where they wanted to have more business growth or more industry and development. Go ahead, Rosemary. So here are the ideal outcomes that were identified by councillors and the mayor at the last meeting. The list here, we're going to try and cover in the next few minutes. The first item considers transfer development rights and cluster standards as a tool for being able to address zoning. The second item was brought up, which is to end sunset clause on grandfathered houses built pre-1964. Then there was a comment about creating the ag commission and defining the scope of responsibility and creating multiple ag zones for different purposes within the ag zone. And then reconsidering 60-145, 17, for recreational agricultural equipment, which is one of the ordinances that we have now. And then changing income and acre standards so current Auburn farmers can build a home. And finally, increasing farming opportunities. So these are the items that we're going to try and cover in the next few minutes, but again, the major focus here tonight is on the proposed amendment. So we want to make sure that we give that the attention it deserves, but we also don't want to ignore these ideal outcomes that were identified by councillors and the mayor. So in terms of potential land preservation tools, you have a number of them. As I mentioned, transfer development rights, cluster development, growth boundaries and impact fees and so forth. I've been involved in a number of comprehensive plans over the years. I'm fairly familiar with some of this information, but I know enough to be dangerous. I know we've got staff who are more knowledgeable on this than I am. I'm going to turn to Eric and to Audrey to see if you'd like to add some comments to this particular slide. And this is really more for, I think, thinking ahead to what we want to do with the ag zone, what could be done with the ag zone in terms of tools. Eric, Audrey?
So what you see on this list is just a very brief list of the different tools and regulatory mechanisms that are out there for preservation, for looking at growth and patterns of development. There are many different tools that communities across the country have used for growth management and for determining the patterns of the rural areas. We have a resident who's produced a famous book called Rule by Design. We'll use a graphic from that to show how rural areas can be protected, large farm areas can be protected, and still provide for development in a thoughtful way. So to move forward, the transfer of development rights, PDRs, purchase of development rights, these are just tools that have been created and used for everything from historic preservation to agricultural preservation, allowing for the transfer of the development rights to different locations or the purchase outright of development rights to different locations in order to preserve an asset or a feature or a resource. So they're best used and tailored when you know what you want to accomplish and you know where you want to accomplish it. Montgomery County, Maryland, where I worked, has a pretty famous TDR program, and that went into specific details by subarea where even a rural area can transfer those rights within a rural area. So it depends on what you want to do, but these are tools, and they have to be tailored towards problem solving and reaching goals and achieving goals. What areas do you want to preserve and why and how? So it gets into pattern and ultimate build-out in terms of looking 2050 or 50 years from now in the year 200, what we're celebrating. So cluster standards are another tool. These have been extensively used, again, to direct patterns of development and concentrate growth so it's easily serviced. And by that, I mean clustered in areas where the bus doesn't have to go down long roads, where water and sewer can efficiently be served, that protect or continue a trail or open space system or habitat. So it's usually in the nature of a thoughtful pattern where resources have been identified that need to be protected and then land is subdivided, not under traditional pattern. Rosemary, if you want to go to the next slide? But in a way that is protecting an existing resource. So if you flip back to the previous one, sorry, we couldn't fit all this on the same slide. But for instance, you might have 100 acres and our current zoning standard says 10 dwelling units or homes per acre. A traditional subdivision would divide that out and you'd have 10 acre lots. But if you want to preserve in perpetuity a resource, what you would do instead is say, "Well, you can have 10 one acre lots, but the result is that you preserve 90 acres that are protected in perpetuity." And you can choose that in any way, shape or form, and that's just, these are just examples. And again, these are creative solutions when you know what you want to achieve. So the next slide is just an example where you have a traditional, let's say you have a traditional set of subdivision, and the same number of units can be foot fit on a quarter of the land area while preserving in perpetuity the remainder. So those are the two different tools that were mentioned at the last meeting, but there are many others once you decide on what you want to accomplish.
Audrey, thank you very much. So next, we had this item brought up to end the sunset clause on grandfathered houses built pre-1964. We have received a legal opinion from Mary Costigan at Bernstein Schur. You can see in quotations, sunset provision placed on a particular use that was legally in place prior to the applicable zoning provision could be challenged as a taking without just compensation. The overwhelming consensus in the applicable cases is that it is the building or the land that is grandfathered and not the owner.
Brett?
Can I talk into the mic?
Yep. You guys do have that full memo that was provided to you, so you do have that full memo so you can review that, and we will make that available on the ag portal as well.
Counselor Lozony.
So what does this mean?
It basically means that we can't do it. It can't be done legally, in a nutshell, is what that means. Anybody want to offer another opinion? Staff or additional information?
It would present legal challenges. So depending on how far you want to pursue that, I think there's some pretty substantial legal parameters that you're looking at facing.
I think if you were to pursue something like this, one thing you'd have to think about is budgeting to buy the house that the sunset clause would be taking each time.
indicating without compensation, whatever they use for the term. And there are a lot of such situations where the houses have been sold, lots have been sold, so it involves all of those who have purchased that property after the fact. So it's very complicated.
The next item, ag committee creation. This is in progress. This item is actually on the agenda for the October 8 Planning Board Committee for Review. The purpose of the ag committee in terms of the proposed ordinance is to proactively review city policies, practices and ordinances to build a stronger food, agricultural and resource economy in Auburn and to address the ongoing needs protecting farms, farmland, natural resources, forestry businesses and woodlots. As proposed, it does not have adjudication authority. It is supportive and advisory only at this point. I know that there may be some different opinions or views among councillors about what you'd like to have this ag committee do. So this is information that you can consider and think about. And again, the planning board is going to be addressing it at their October 8 meeting. Next, there is also a suggestion about creating zones within the ag zone for agriculture. We call this creating or create distinctions within the ag zones. Over 40% of Auburn is in the ag zone. Grouping all ag property together under one zoning ordinance has limitations. Creating separate ag zones could help isolate specific needs in different areas. The comp plan suggests conservation, open space, resource protection, agriculture. There are specific examples already, and I alluded to this earlier, where previous councils have done certain things in the ag zone for specific purposes. So that is something to think about. And if you think about the comprehensive 2010 plan, or comp plan for 2010, it identifies future areas where there could be rezoning within the ag zone. Next, agricultural and recreational equipment in the ag zone. This has to do with assembly sale, research, development, distribution, instruction, training, demonstration and maintenance of recreational agricultural equipment within the ag zone with certain restrictions. I would suggest that this is a discussion that could be held by the council at another time, another workshop. It's not really relevant to the discussion at hand this evening, which is on the proposed amendments, but that was brought up. Rosemary. Here we go with proposed ordinance standards. So this is directly from the recommendations. Replacement of 50% income criteria, two of five must be met. At least a minimum farm income to file IRS Form F of the farmer occupant. At least a minimum forestry income to file the equivalent of IRS Form F of the farmer occupant. At least 2.5 acres devoted to the production of crops, grazing of livestock, conservation such as forestry, wildlife habitat, specific protected natural resource. At least 50% of land area enrolled in state farm, open space or tree growth tax assessment programs. A minimum investment of 1,000 in crops, livestock, reforestation or farm resource conservation is defined by the agricultural advisory board or committee. Go ahead. So the IRS Schedule F clarification. We have done some work on that. I don't feel you, you in particular, have looked into that. There are no minimums to be able to file this form. In certain situations, Schedule F can be filed with zero income. A Schedule F is very similar to a Schedule C with the main difference being that Schedule C is used for every other kind of business. The only thing a farmer needs to do to qualify is send the state a copy of the Schedule F from their tax return. There are certain tax deductions that a farmer can qualify for, and the IRS will consider a taxpayer farmer if 66% of their gross income comes from farming. Then a parentheses prevents the weekend farmer from qualifying for tax breaks meant for full-fledged farmers. Phil, do you want to add anything based on the research that you've done on this?
I think that's straight from the accountant's opinion who does, files many of these Schedule Fs every year.
Current state land use programs criteria. Farmland, minimum of five acres in the farmland program. The land must be used for farming, agriculture or horticulture. It can include woodland and wasteland. The parcel must contribute at least 2,000 gross income from farming activities each year. Open space, no minimum age requirement. Parcel must be preserved or restricted in use to provide a public benefit. Benefits recognized include public recreation, scenic resources, game management and wildlife habitat. Tree growth, minimum of 10 acres of forested land use for commercial harvesting. A forest management harvest plan must be prepared and a sworn statement to that effect submitted with the application. Ideal outcome, increased farming opportunities. Ideal outcome, increased farming opportunities. This is a primary goal, I think, in the creation of the Ag Committee. The proposed ordinance, as it is right now, really is looking for ways to try and encourage, strengthen, and foster more agriculture. And by having the Ag Committee meet, the hope is that the Ag Committee will be able to come up with ideas on how to do that from what other communities may be doing, or things that we have done in the past that maybe could be applied to agriculture. And the Economic Community Development Office can be a resource in doing this. Eric, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just add that through the discussion with the Planning Board and the previous committees, there are economic or tax incentives as well as infrastructure incentives that we could implement as a city to help support farming.
Next. Outcomes to avoid, creating service costs, degradation of resources, development rush in first year. Again, this came out of the discussion from the last workshop. Rosemary, do you want to go to the next slide? So concerns on the cost of services. Staff certainly understands that concern. Costs are hard to quantify and extremely variable and cumulative. We think some cost elements to consider are education costs, which probably have the largest impact, density, distance from other locations, incremental road use, emergency services. I'm personally hesitant to put a figure on what those costs might be at this point because I want to make sure that it's as accurate as it can be. So we are looking at it. We've taken a couple of areas within the city that we're evaluating, and we'll come back to you at some point, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, and have a conversation about that. I don't feel that we have a hard number at this point, so we need more time to be able to work on that. Next slide. Concerns that have been raised, how are other communities addressing Ag and farmland issues? An info sheet has been provided describing how some main towns are addressing this issue. A tool to provide context, these regulations have been created to address issues unique to each municipality. Auburn's Ag Zone will require its own unique solutions. We've touched on some of these things already with the previous slides. Eric, Audrey, do you want to add any comments to this particular slide?
Well, I think the slide says a lot in that looking at comparative communities is always a challenge because you have to make sure they are truly comparative. I think Auburn is unique, and the agricultural resource that's been protected over time is unique. The communities so far that we have listed for you as main examples don't come close to the land area that is currently in this zone. So without going into too much detail, it's hard to use them as examples.
Next slide. Planning Board objectives. At the last workshop, there was a request made to share that information. Scale agriculture. Neither should be negatively impacted by a change in the code. Forestry and other conservation use may need to be considered differently as the unintended consequences have resulted in 75% forested land that is now home to wildlife populations. Continues on regarding the amendment to the definition of a farm. In its entirety, this section does not meet the comprehensive plan goals for the zone or the Planning Board objective. Regarding the five-year parcel division, the board finds that on the surface, it appears to partially meet the Planning Board objectives. However, the board recommends that the council give careful consideration to these provisions regarding unintended consequences, such as subdividing land under false pretenses. Then regarding acreage requirements, the board finds that it does not have the information and analysis required to make a meaningful recommendation on this section. Then strongly consider putting the Agriculture Commission or Advisory Board in place prior to making any decisions on text changes, and knowledgeable body can thoroughly weigh, analyze, research, and make implementable recommendations. Special consideration should be given to the effects of changing the Ag Zone on the diverse watersheds within Auburn, both in North and South Auburn. Look for ways to increase communications and participation from individuals in the Ag Zone. The concerns expressed by Bernstein Schur, memorandum dated June 10, 2019, should be a first consideration in proceeding with this amendment. So let's go back to that for a minute. Rosemary, if you can. So I would like to see if there's any, first of all, anything that Audrey, as a staff to the Planning Board, you want to add to that?
I think it's important to know that the Planning Board did go through a fairly, I wouldn't necessarily call it rigorous, but they did spend three meetings having extensive discussions, first starting with a comprehensive plan and the purpose of the Ag Zone, then hearing from the state. Stephanie Gilbert was present, presented a lot of information on what constitutes a farm, and they deliberated in a final meeting in which they made these recommendations. They based their objectives, the five objectives, on the first analysis and reading of the comprehensive plan. So they wanted to have a basis for their decision-making that would prove easy. They did not want to delve into wordsmithing. They wanted to keep this at a macro perspective because the council at that time, in their interpretation, asked for recommendations on how to proceed and not necessarily get into the weight of wordsmithing. So that's how they developed the objectives. They went through the text proposed, section by section, and made their determinations. I do believe you have a copy of the letter that was sent, and if there are any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Rosemary, you want to move ahead? So potential directions. So the council could move the current proposed amendments forward for council action. The council could potentially create a variance to address current unique circumstances and hardships on parcels 3 to 10 acres by giving the Planning Board specific authority to make Ag Zone exceptions. The proposed Ag Committee addresses and suggests alternative implementation tools based on Planning Board response. D, rezonate areas of the Ag Zone to meet the needs of the community as they arise, as has happened in the past. It doesn't address the income and acreage issue on the proposed amendments, but certainly something to think about in terms of the future. Clarify outstanding issues with the Comp Plan update process that will begin July 2020, and clarify long-term goals for rural areas. It's really, and you know this already, very important that the council is clear about what your goals are, what you're trying to accomplish. I think that's the last slide. Is that right?
All right. Rosemary, could you just go back to the slide that has the ideal outcomes that the council had addressed at the last meeting? A through F, I believe it was. So counsel, if we start here, and then we can go in and have conversation, I think that from this list that we discussed, Mr. Mayor?
I just want to, we've been going for a little over an hour now. I don't know, maybe it's a good time, if this is, if you think it's a good time to take a five-minute bio break?
Yeah, perfect time.
Before, okay.
All right, five-minute break. We're back on. Phil, I'm going to turn it over to you. If we could get the rest of the council sitting, please? Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. So I asked Rosemary to go back to this slide. This is where we left from our last meeting. We talked about, through our discussions, had identified these ideal outcomes. I believe the staff has provided you with a decent amount of information on each one of these in that short week turnaround. If the council agrees, what I'd like to do is, if we were to look at A, which is TDR and clusters, if, do not believe that this requires any further conversation tonight other than to say that if the council would like to move in this area, then that would be something that really would be designed for the Comp Plan to start identifying the sunset, ending of the sunset. I believe we identified that with a legal opinion. The Ag Committee is on schedule, as the manager mentioned, August 8th will be going to the Planning Board and then back to the council.
October.
Yeah. It would be nice to go back to.
I know, wouldn't that be nice?
I don't want someone to go by. And then the distinct Ag Zones, again, a lot more information would have to be brought through, forward on that, so that would be a good process for the Comp Plan. Recreation, the current ordinance that references recreation use in Ag, we believe, what our recommendation would be that, if the council would like to bring that up later, it could be brought up separately, and then we already talked about farming opportunities. So really, what that boils down to is the criteria, change in income, acre standards, and the actual ordinance that, that's been brought forward. So if we could, I'd like to start the conversation there. If the council, after this, would like to go back to one of these other areas, we could certainly do that, but we can start with changing the income acre standard and the other criteria that's outlined within the ordinance. So moving forward, we'll open up the floor for discussion.
One of the ways I want to frame this whole discussion is that it really is important to consider the people who have had land, who are not able to build on it, who have good intent, who want to be able to have their families use it, and however we move forward, I think it's important that that be one of the first things that we address, whether it's the Ag Committee who looks at it and makes recommendations. We need to address that for these people.
Counsel, for you.
Stole my thunder. No, I really believe, I've been saying this all along, I really believe that there have been a number of individuals. In fact, the guy who's going to cut my trees said the same thing. He's, he's got property he wants to pass on to his children, wants to be able to do things with the property, but he can't at this point. And, and many people have waited. And I think this may be, of all of this, this would be the easiest fix to take care of in an expedient, short amount of time. And I think it would be, probably come with a lot of agreement with a lot of people.
Counselor Hayes.
Sort of agree, I think, two things. One, we're talking legacy. And I guess it really, to me, we have to define what's legacy. To me, the people that are purchased since even 1960s, when this ordinance came into be, anybody purchasing after that date, really should have understood what the ordinance said. So I, I am troubled that there are properties that, well, I think we heard tonight, one property somehow gets subdivided smaller than, say, the 10. At least that's the way I understood it. But I think that, so I somewhat bothered that I think that going down to three acres, I could do that if it truly goes back to somebody that had a piece of property at the, when this ordinance was decided in the 60s. The other part is, is we try to find a standard, and we talked about the federal form, now we're hearing that that really doesn't even set a minimum. But there is, and I was glad that we got a detail on the, the state programs. And I think that the, the state farm program, as we see, it's a 2,000 minimum, and it's a five acre parcel. So I think that that should be considered, because that gives us, the state lays it out, and it would be easy to follow, and it gives us some ability truly to, to monitor.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Titus.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a few thoughts as well. I, I think I agree with the idea of, you know, having a committee, an advisory committee. As so long as if what, what we're going to do is allow standards or for these exceptions to be made, so that this committee and the planning board can help make, make decisions like this on a case-by-case basis. And then this council will have to make the final decision, but at least they'll have background on each individual detailed case, regardless of the size of the lot. And then going forward, it wouldn't, you know, if there was going to be any dividing, that would be something that, again, the planning board would have to decide and bring recommendations to the, to the council. Because really, it's hard for us to be able to make a broad-based, it's clear that this, it's so complicated that we can't make a broad-based ordinance that covers everything. But we do need to, to set parameters that we want, that would allow for a change of use, to kind of be something that we do get involved in, not just, you know, maybe certain things. I think that the, if we do that, we could always change the income rule, and we could actually make it quite minimum, knowing that there's a governing body that's going to make sure that it isn't turning into a sprawl, or subdivisions, or that kind of thing. I'm, I'm a little concerned that it seems that the comp plan is totally against everything that we want to do here. Comp plan is saying, leave it alone. We have a new comp plan coming next summer that may change that. But from what I'm seeing is the comp plan is being used as a way to say, well, no, we really shouldn't develop the, we got to preserve it according to the comp plan. But maybe having an advisory committee with the power to recommend, and then a planning board who can look at all the, and everybody gets the same equal chance, but it has to go through the process, might be the answer. But I think we still have to think about what the parameters might be, or what those powers might be.
Eric, do you just have a comment regarding the comp plan, based on what Counselor Titus just mentioned?
It, the comp plan really broke out what is now the ag zone, along the lines of some of the discussion from last week, into three, three different areas, for specific purposes. One was resource protection, wetlands, floodplains, and just natural areas that the community deemed should be protected. The second category is agriculture, which is fairly self-explanatory. That would include land that is usable for agriculture or forestry now, but could be used for something else in the future, or could remain agricultural. And then the third one is conservation open space, that would take into account places like Mount Appetite, how that is a different, a different piece of land than a generally privately-owned land, as well as a lot of land in the Lake Auburn watershed district that's owned by the Watershed Protection Commission, as being a conservation area and not, not suitable for agriculture necessarily.
Rosemary, can you just highlight what you're showing now on the map?
Sure. This is the future land use from the comp plan, and it just basically highlights what Eric just said. You have the, the lighter green areas here, which are the ag. The, these areas are the open space for various reasons, everything from the watershed to Mount Appetite. And then you can't see it very well, but there are some areas along here, along the river, that are the resource protection. And so you can, you can see here that those were the areas that they were primarily designating.
Great. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Rosemary, could you show on the map with the cursor where the malls are, where the Walmart is, where the mall across the street is? And I want to see what the color is.
We are right around there?
North, north.
That area there.
No, north.
Oh, no, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong bridge. Right around here.
Because I'm recalling when that went in, and all of.
The red area.
The red area.
It's the red area. And also.
General business. And that yellow area is moderate density neighborhood conservation.
That was one of the pieces, I know, when Kathy Shaw talked about, you know, building on good land and how the good land is going. Well, that was beautiful land, and that was filled with animals. And it was a white home farm, and all of a sudden, you know, I, I remember how I felt when the big malls were starting to be put in. And also, where I, I live, you know, off East Hot Scrapple Road, I live on Cherryvale Circle, and the neighborhood behind me used to be ag zone, and now it is not as residential. I don't know how that came about, and when that happened, that all of that was rezoned for purposes of building residences, single-family residences. So I, I'm just kind of setting the tone for what has already occurred and how it happened, because I don't recall understanding how it happened and why it was permitted.
I think Eric can address that.
The, the mall area, Cherryville, and kind of the area across from the Auburn Middle School are all areas that probably most of us can remember had, had animals grazing on those fields or hay production. Those, I think, are perfect examples of how the community has chosen to grow over time. It's not without impacts to farmland, but the mall area and the housing across from the Auburn Middle School made more sense where it is in relation to other services and existing developed areas than if we had, say, plopped the mall area on the southernmost tip of Auburn, you know, off the end of Silverbridge Mill Road, or they were, there were conscious decisions made about sacrificing farmland in areas that are closest to other developed areas.
Thank you. We'll continue around the room.
Thank you.
I'll say.
I'd like to just, I'll wait, I'd like to hear what the rest of the councilors say.
Okay. Counselor Young.
Well, 10-acre lots make some sense in the respect that if, if you figure one acre lot might yield so many children, a 10-acre lot would be one-tenth of that. So it's your, the cost and liability is spread over a larger area. But I don't know how many 10-acre lots you could get in the ag zone. Probably quite a few. But when you write your goal to not to have a lot of people out there, you're, and you have the income, you're writing, you're excluding a whole mess of people that might like to be in farming. You're, you're just including only the professional farmers, not amateurs. And as I go knocking on doors in different areas, I hear these complaints about miniature goats, and you remember that? You know, you might say, you might say that it'd be better off if these people would be in an area where they'd be more invited than the livestock that they have. And, but they can't go there because they have other jobs, and they can't meet this 50% rule. But if people were engaged in these activities, be they making an income of it, or just doing it as an amateur or nonprofit type of thing, as long as they have another source of income to buy their tractors and everything, it'd be grouping like people with like activities. And I would kind of like to see, maybe we explore that, and see that we might be able to get, invite those people to be in that area. Because right now, my wife tells me that, I said, well, what do you think this, about this? Is this going to help Auburn? She says, people aren't going to come here from Gorm and Standish and stop farming here. They already have their farms. So I said, well, who would come here? Well, it'd be people just starting out. Maybe they're just a hobby. And we see plenty of them around the city. So I'd like to kind of explore that, and see if that goes up, and see what reaction do we get to that. Would, would people that are farming 10 acres welcome people that are in a hobby type of thing, unprofessional? I mean, it'd be, they're not going to complain about the smell of pig farms or something, because they're probably in that same activity themselves.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Walker.
Thank you. This has been, it's been a long time. We've been dealing with this now for quite a few months, over a couple of years, and then some of us even a lot longer have discussed this many, many times. My only skin in the game is, I have a son that wants to build on his land that's less than 10 acres. I've, I've asked all different people, how can we do this? The only way that we saw was to bring this to, I guess, where we are today, to iron out, how can we do it? Now, I see some options up here. If you want my opinion, we've only got a small 10 acres, few of them. I don't know if it's 10, I don't know if it's 30, but it's somewhere in the middle of that. I think the city of Auburn should take the bull by the horn and find out how many people want to build that have 10 acres, or less than 10, down to three acres. See who they are, and is that an option that we can deal with and get out of our way? I don't think you're going to find someone that's got 100 acres out there that likes the idea of selling five acres of his land every five years, if he wants to or not wants to. So I think that's probably a bad situation, that if we enacted that, we probably wouldn't hear the end of it for a long, long, long time. But I do think there's, there's opportunity for small acreage people to be able to build a house and still farm, whether you call it a hobby farm, raising small stock, raising your roses to give to your girlfriend. I don't know what you want to do with it, but I think it's a capability, and I think we should support what is really needed to help the people to do this. I do not believe in full growth, meaning 10 farms in one place, whether they can fit there or can't fit there, if you've got to split up that land. I don't like, I don't like the idea of thinking that we're going to build 25 houses on one big lot down there in the country area. So I'm, I'm open to one house, I'm open to two houses on, you know, 20 acres of land. But when you start getting down small acreage, one house, you tell us you're going to farm, and we, like we do today, we bless you and say, go ahead and farm, and you choose what farming you want to do. That's the way I, I see it. And I'm not trying to offend anyone, and I just think it's the right way that we should think about letting some of the younger people have the opportunity to build on a piece of land that there is no house on at Auburn. Thank you.
Let me just ask Karen or Eric maybe to weigh in on the removing of the splitting that Counselor Walker's referring to. Currently, that's not being proposed in the language, because it's currently a, an option that a property owner has, if they meet all the regulations. Is that correct? The 10 acres?
The 10 acres minimum. Property owners can split to create lots with 250 feet of frontage and 10 acres currently. And the, the new, the draft proposal that's been in front of the council would still allow that, with a revised standard for what constitutes a, a farm for the purpose of building a house.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gary, any comments?
Thank you. It is kind of disconcerting that the planning board had at least three meetings, which possibly was three months, to consider all this data and information, and they could form a valid opinion. After giving so much time to it, basically, they said, well, we think that our best option is to go forward and recommend setting up this ag board. Well, if all the studies and the comp, I mean, and the planning board all say, listen, bow to forming this committee, then why aren't we doing that? I'm troubled. I know we got to do something. I'm not trying to shirk our responsibility, or my responsibility of sitting here, but I want to form valid opinion, sound judgment, and a way to go forward. I don't think we have the time, between now and the election, and even the new council come in, to give it the due diligence. I want to do what's right for all the property owners in the ag zone. I want to be able to help those farmers that have families that would like to be able to have their family there. I'm not sure if just lowering the income is enough, because we take in consideration both spouses' income that arrive from the ag, I mean, from being a farmer. Maybe we shouldn't. Maybe we should just count the income from that person or family members that are, are farming. That way, it would lower how much if there is, we, we or the ag commission says there is a minimum standard or a form you got to fill out. I care deeply about Auburn, and I don't want to jeopardize our natural resources and the stuff we have today. I've been here all my life. I'm not going to go anywhere. And we're known for our open space, and our farms, and our friendly community. I still would like to look at other zones and see where we could also put other forms. Hey, maybe we could need to change rural residential spot into ag. Who knows? I think us as a council should sit down, look at the city map, and decide where we would like to see development, not just in the ag zone, but all across the board. My goal would be to create properties where families can have, where, properties where they can have homes with yards for the kids to go and play in. I don't like when I see all these houses around here that has no lots big enough for the kids to play in, and then they have to go run to their, our local park, which is a great avenue, but it's distances, it may not be right in their backyard, and maybe distances, and I'm not too cool with kids just running the streets to go someplace to be able to play and to run. That way, my goal would be to, like I said, form this ag commission. Us now set the perimeters, let them sit down and write their ground rules, and then come back to us with their proposed plan. If, if after we got it, if we don't totally agree with it, or if we think of a suggestion, maybe we could tweak it, and then send it out back to the people. Everything we do, I want to make sure that the ag community gets a chance to weigh into this. I don't know how much time people get to get a hold of these documents that we're privileged to, that we're going to be forming our votes for next council meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you, staff, for everything you've done today. It's been pretty good, really insightful, and it really consolidated, I think, a lot of the information into something that's chunkable and easily digestible by the rest of us. that's chunkable and easily digestible by the rest of us. A couple, a couple just clarification points if I could. But first, let me just say, I was, I'm very, very happy, this is my happy face, about actual solutions being proposed by councilors. Council Hayes, I got to give it to you, I wasn't thinking along the lines you were, but it makes sense, you know, by looking at state standards and five acres and having some sort of conformity there. I applaud that. I think that is a good step. And then what Counsel Young was saying and about hobby farms and so forth, and Counsel Titus about fairness. And then what Counsel Lasagna and Counsel Fornier started about legacy, and legacy and passing on. And just one, one comment on that, and you talked about it a little bit, Counsel Hayes, if you could confirm. When you're talking about land that's owned prior to 1964, could you envision that it's the owners of the land, or owners that own the land before 1964 and/or their heirs? If it was, let's say, willed or sold for a moderate price to their, you know, close family member, I think is a term used.
I agree. I think we're talking family, so if it's passed down to even a distant family member, I'm fine with that, but that, to me, is legacy.
That's like, okay.
Yeah, that's not a sale.
Okay. And that's, I just wanted, because it does solve, it solves, I think, some past problems. I also think it solves some current problems or future problems that will happen in the next generation. So again, everybody, thank you very much for that. You know, the whole point of this, I want to address what some people said from the audience today too, just a little bit. It's not about forcing an issue. Leadership styles vary from person to person. Some leadership styles might not be similar or comforting to others, but at the end of the day, it's about working the issue until the issue is solved. It's something I've done for 20-plus years, and it's, I've had a lot of success, and I've had some failures with it in the past as well. But I really do think that by doing something often, when it's timely and it's fresh in your mind, you don't take steps backwards, you keep moving forward, and you can actually come up with a consensus. I think that tonight, there's a consensus. I'll also say that I hope that nobody can, looks at the proposed ag ordinances as written as a potential solution. It's not. And I said it in previous meetings. It was meant as a jumping off point, and up until tonight, it was the only solutions, concrete, other than forming a committee, that's been proposed formally. So it was just that. It's a brainstorming, jumping off point. I think what we have here in addressing legacy issues, and I'll let Phil and staff summarize it better than I can because I probably missed something, but summarizing the legacy issues, conformity with state law versus federal law, which is state law seems to be less ambiguous. And looking at just rectifying, maybe on a case-by-case basis, actual three-to-10-acre variances or lots and applying some variances there, makes sense. And I also think to quote Mayor Cleveland loosely, who was dealing with this in the 90s. By the way, we've been dealing with this as a city since the 80s that I remember, probably, and you have that in your packet, probably longer than that. He talked about a slow release. I don't really like that concept. It's like a slow allowance of opportunity, if you would. Allowing people to have the opportunity, as Counsel Young said, to start off a business. And I'll end it with this. When I started my business in 2003, 2004, I can't imagine me as someone with 400 bucks, a laptop and an old lap, and a couch, starting my business, but first having to go, and I started in a rural residential zone, going to the city and asking someone permission to start my business. If that was the case, I wouldn't have started my business here, and very well, frankly, I couldn't afford to start it anywhere else because I could only afford to start it in my living room. Might not have ever happened. And that would have been, you know, a lost opportunity. And I think about Lost Valley, and I think about how, because Lost Valley was built, because it could be pre-1964. Since then, how many Lost Valley-type ideas have been stifled by the current ordinances? Could there have been others, people that wanted to try something, that had an idea or a dream, but then just hit one too many roadblocks? And they're significant. And after you hit a lot of roadblocks with banks and business plans, just one more that you're not expecting can hurt. It could be the deciding factor on whether to go for it or not. How many did we lose? I'd love to see what people can come up with when they have the opportunity to do so, right in Auburn. So that's what I want to say. I'm glad, I'll turn it over to Phil at this point. Like to see if we can, whatever needs to happen in order to see if there's a consensus plan, which I think everybody's just talking about brewing.
Great. Rosemary, can you go to the last slide?
So as the mayor mentioned, I think that we are identifying some common themes through some of the conversation. And so next step would be to try to move in that direction. I believe that, you know, these potential directions that we identified are ones that we can discuss and, and see where, where the council would like to move on this. Counsel Hayes, I think you had a comment first.
Yeah, I just made a couple of notes as we moved along, and our mayor referenced back to 1984, and I'm looking at Paul Cho reporting back from the Planning Board to the council. And I guess I'd like to look specifically at what they looked at as want to accomplish and what to discourage, or want to discourage. I think we could broaden what we had mentioned earlier by going back here because I think we're reviewing the same thing, the same issue. So I think that I just highlight that as maybe to go back to it, maybe we want to broaden what we're saying we want to accomplish and what we don't, we're trying to discourage. Couple of other things. One, you know, we looked at a couple of the small lots down in the ag zone in the South Auburn, and some of them were together. You know, I guess instead of, I'd not like to see each one of those individually, maybe develop individually. I think that maybe there's a way of helping to cluster those together, make it one property. Maybe one owner is willing to sell, the other one wants to do something, and maybe the city can assist in that. If we could try to combine at least where there's some small lots and make it a bigger lot. Again, I think if we really want a farming activity to succeed, they need space. And I think that three acres is not a lot of space for an activity to truly survive and grow. So if we truly are trying to encourage farming that will be beneficial to the community as well as provide a, a good income for the family unit, I think we should try to encourage smaller lots to become a bigger lot. So I guess I'd throw that out. And looking at how we allow, going back to legacy, again, I think, again, we could refer to the State Farm program. I guess I'd like to get a better feel what contract zoning is all about. I think maybe there's a need to have a way, you know, like construction projects. If somebody says they're going to do something to protect the community, the project is bonded. So I'm trying to find out some way if somebody establishes a residence, but, you know, within a few years, it no longer exists as a farming activity. I think it comes to that question, should that then structure remain on the property? You know, having some sort of a contract, per se, so that somehow there's maybe, you know, through bonding or whatever, there's a mechanism that maybe that unit, family unit moves on, but then the land can be taken back to its natural form and allow somebody else to come forward for whatever use. I guess the other, I can't read my own writing. I guess, you know, we talk about, and we've talked before, we have a lot of committees, and, you know, we're talking another, and I, I think we need it. But I'm wondering, and I think composition, we're looking for somebody maybe from the Conservation Committee to be part of it. I think now foresteries, they have representation from forestry. You know, might it be wise to, you know, and we'll discuss this when this committee comes forward for, for consideration, but the idea of getting a whole group together that's really concentrating on the issues, the open space, natural resource, the ag. So they're coming forth to the planning board with not a recommendation necessarily in the future, but maybe a consensus, maybe the issues that such a board has reviewed, and, and they can present their review, what are the issues here? You know, what are, again, it comes down to what does it, what are the pluses and the minuses? So, and I guess when I mentioned that the State Farm program and the five acres, I still think we need to hold our 10-acre rule. But I guess I was forwarding the five acre is really kind of a minimum that the state recognizes. So I think we have an issue still with, with less than five. And that's why, again, I encourage wherever we can to try to cluster.
Karen, can you address that specifically?
I just want to clarify that when the state says five acres, that's five acres of farmland. That's not lot size. That's minus all the barns and the house and the roads and, so it's, it's the farmable land has to be five acres.
Okay, so that certainly encourages us to keep the 10-acre minimum.
So what I'd like to do is try to move the conversation. So we've heard a lot of different ideas. We've certainly come back to more ideas in moving forward, but if we go back to where we, I think that we were hearing some common themes and try to focus the conversation here. One, if we can, I'd like to park the ag committee, as I mentioned before, that's going through a process. If you identify where you maybe have identified some consensus, and there'll be some requirements to that committee, then we'll have that conversation. But I don't believe we need to really discuss anymore about forming that. I think that that's, process is going to be moving forward. So if we can now focus on one of those areas was, was changing income. And if we can have that in conversation now at that level of what does that look like and how would you like to proceed with that, we can move the conversation there. Counsel Walker?
I just, I have some concerns on the amount of money we're talking about here and what you can, what you can earn on your property or what you can spend on it, is, I guess, the other look at it. My mother, when I was a lot younger, had 2.5 acres of land, and the house sat on about 100 by 40, we'll say. The rest of it was mostly downhill, and everyone said, "There's not much there that you can do with that land." So she said, "Well, we'll see what I can do with it," with an old rototiller that she had got from somebody. And my older brother and her were out there rototilling for, I'm going to say, probably a month. And before I knew what was going on, the whole front of the house, which was another 100 feet down the road, was all rototilled up so that she could put a garden in. The second year, we, the whole family, my mother and three kids, had enough food to eat, and I don't know what that was worth, but I'm going to guarantee you today, doing 100 by 60 feet, and did it, my mother did it with little strings and had peas here and cucumbers and tires over here and something else over there. We ate all winter until it was time to plant the next garden. Of course, you have to buy some other things because meat doesn't grow up out of the ground. So we ate what we were, were lucky enough to eat, and we ate just as good as the neighbor down the road that, you know, had 100 acres down there that he could farm on. But I don't know what you can put for a price, and you don't need more than three acres to be able to maintain your family, and that's what a farm is. A farm is what my mother took care of us kids with when we were a lot younger. So if you don't think that's a farm, you're mistaken in mind. And I think you need to be a farmer for a little while to understand what a farm and what a farmer is, and what you need for a house and what you don't need. And we didn't have a big barn, but we had what we called a little hen house that we turned into something that we could put some of our vegetables in and keep them up until it was so cold that something would freeze up. But we worked a farm, and I know what a little farm is. I don't know what a big farm is. I worked on 100-acre farm, hay and then all of that. I don't know what that price is either. Maybe it's worth $50 a bale, maybe it's worth $5 a bale. But in any case, I don't think you need more than three acres to be considered a person that farms to be able to survive and feed its family.
If I could, just to define what Counsel Walker's talking about, it's subsistence farming, being able to produce enough food for yourself with no monetary value. The IRS talks about it in their codes. It's talked about, and I just read an article in Mother Earth about subsistence farming versus commercial. So I do think that Counsel Walker brings up a point of do we distinguish between someone who wants to feed their family and not do anything for resale or commercial sale?
Counsel Lasagna?
I know we don't, this is not the time to go into the ag committee, but I believe that the ag committee is the place where we can address these complex issues so that people understand what subsistence farming is, they hear that story.
So we're going to try to move off from that committee, and if we could stay on just what that, if there's consensus on it, then we'll be able to move forward.
I just don't think we can discuss some of these.
And maybe it would be best if, as we do our comments, if it could be more of a rapid fire of this is what I believe, that we need to look at the income, and then we can move right on. Counsel Fornier?
Has to do with income. Having come from, you know, orchardists and vegetable gardeners, you cannot, in this day and age, have a subsistence of just, you know, working on the farm and using that money for, you know, your, your, your income. You have to be able to diversify, and I think it's important that we include in that. However we, we gauge that figure to be, we definitely need to allow the ability for other members of the family to be earning incomes elsewhere because if you've got hail hitting one side of your orchard and then it hits the other, all you've got is apple cider, and it's, there's nothing, it doesn't pay anything compared to perfect apples. So we need to bear that in mind, not just farming. Somehow incorporate however the committee feels that we can use as an income.
Counsel Hayes?
No, I think there's definitely a difference between a gentleman farmer and a true farmer. Subsistence farming, to me, is more of a gentle, gentleman farmer. I think there's got to be a wholesale, retail market for what comes off the land to be considered a farmer, farmer and needing a residence for that activity.
You did, earlier, you did mention $2,000 of conformity with state standard?
Yes, but I define that as being, there's got to be sales involved.
Counsel Titus?
Well, I mean, this whole issue is really confusing in that you get one benefit and you get something that's an unwanted consequence as well. Because to me, it looks like the income requirement right now is both a benefit and a restriction. The benefit is that you have a low tax base because of you had the restrictions. So whenever you change that, you're going to change the benefit of low taxes if it's automatically open for building. Unless we have restrictions that say it's eligible to do something else with it with the approval of the committee of the planning board, but we're going to write what we think is going to be, makes a property eligible to be changed. Because as far as income goes, I mean, you can have a 100-acre farm that's making $100,000, and you can have a smaller farm that's making that much too. It's not really relative to the size, but yet it is, we're saying 50% income rule. If you've got a piece of property too low to be able to live off from 50% of any income you get from it, it's never going to be that way, you know? But changing that requirement is going to be key to what happens there. I mean, if we go down to the $1,000 or $2,000 minimum and Schedule F, then that opens the door for anything that go on there as long as the advisory board and planning board agrees to it and this council also agrees to it as well. So this is really a sweeping question because keeping that 50% rule as it is right now is never going to change anything if we don't change it, right?
So currently, the only value, dollar value that's been mentioned is the $2,000. Any other comments from council?
Well, I think it goes back.
I'm sorry, Counsel Hayes. If I can go to Counsel Young first, then we'll come back to you.
Well, farmers, farmers I've known growing up, they're more barters and whatever, so they don't really show much income. They, they just, and I don't know if they really keep that much track of it, but it's all, the bartering system is all worth something, and I don't know exactly how we would measure that.
Thank you. Counsel Hayes?
I guess I'm just going back to the State Farm program. I think there's other criteria to be recognized in that program. So I guess I'm thinking that it's not just... So I guess I'm thinking that it's not just picking and choosing the criteria that they have to be recognized as a, under the farm program.
Other comments?
We could, we could err on the side of conformity and just say you have to be enrolled in the state ag farm program for any lot over 10 acres. Again, assuming the variance is granted for legacy lots between three and 10. We just ask, we ask for state conformity. And that also protects people with regards to tax breaks as well because it does provide, Karen, and I can't remember the percentage of property tax break it gives that farmer.
Lower price per acre for your acreage depending on what type of crop you're farming.
Okay. But it is, it is a protection methodology?
Counsel Hayes.
And the party would have to choose because if they're in the ag zone and they're just raising crops without a residence, they're still at the $800 per acre valuation, correct?
That is correct, yes.
But as soon as they put a, come in, put a residence, then all of a sudden, at least that building lot is now closer to 30,000. So even that begins to, you know, has its impacts. If we have too many of those, it puts pressure on the, the other properties that can go up for sale, raising, you know, the valuation within the ag zone in general.
Potentially that could happen, yes.
Counsel Lozania.
I was just going to say I'd be concerned about the unintended consequences of having just that flat that this is what we're going to do, we're going to go with that.
Counsel Titus.
I have a question. When it comes to determining that 800 per acre, I know it has, we, you say we're in a point where we may be having to relook at that due to, so resale value is what dictates that or is it the zone it's in that dictates that?
If you're asking, well, the increase in the price per acre, obviously, it's still going to be well below a house lot or something that's in the rural rez zone where you have more possibilities for your land. Yes, you are correct again in saying that it is based on market sales that we track all the time and we are seeing that people are paying more than $800 an acre for vacant ag land. So that's what it's going to be based on if, if and when that adjustment is made.
So there's no federal or state requirement that you look at that's considered farmland, whether it's farmed or not, doesn't matter, it's still based on?
Market sales.
Sales, market sales, nothing to do with what's being used, the property's being used for?
Not unless it's in a special land use classification.
Okay. Mayor?
It might be helpful. I just, I just logged in real quick to the city mains website, talking about the farmland program, current land use programs. And there is, without going into detail, there's several things that really stick out. A, the five acres of usable arable land, which you can't count your house and other accessory buildings, those are taxed, just like rural residential or suburban. $2,000 gross income, gross income from farming activities each year. It's, and there's also, there's some pretty stiff penalties too if you don't, if you don't continue with the program or you're foundering ag on it. I think we had some people that are part of this program, there's not many in Auburn that actually spoke at some of our earlier meetings. So it's pretty strenuous. There's also, this is a minimum, you can enact a voluntary municipal farm support program too, which I'd be interested in seeing a advisory committee form. That could have additional help for those bona fide true people that are starting off in business, just like any other business we have here. I mean, I'd like to see if there's consensus with a starting off point. And I understand that there's some unintended consequences, hypotheticals if you would, that, you know, people are worried about. And I think if we can address that after we come up with something, does that make sense? And then see and then look at the unintended after that.
So Karen, how many, how many do we believe?
We have approximately 50, somewhere between, off the top of my head, I'm going to say between 49 and 52 people enrolled right now in the farmland, land use classification through the state.
Counsel Titus.
Well, I was going to say that I think that we need to arrive at a conclusion, which might be that threshold. As long as we have also in place, there's not going to be any immediate, everybody going to getting billing permit, they have to go through the processes and eventually come back to council for approval to make changes. But at least that would lower that threshold to the point where, because as long as the 50% rule's in there, we're not going anywhere.
Can we go back to your comment about coming back to the council? So if the rule changed that the individual must meet the state conformity rules, whatever that is? What were you just saying?
Well, I'm just saying the scenario I'm seeing, and it's just kind of, we haven't decided yet, but if we have an advisory committee and we have a planning board, this board is going to give not so much powers, but the ability to them to make exceptions to what's going on now. That is allow something to be done in the ag zone, assuming that they get, there is farm, which we might make, change the definition of what a farm is, not the 50% rule, then they can make recommendations back to us. And what will happen is the council will have to decide on a case-by-case basis whether this particular project or whatever can go forward.
I don't think I have heard consensus around the room on that.
Well, that's what would have to happen though, because we can't give an advisory committee the power to make those changes. And I don't think we should give the planning board the ultimate power to make those changes.
I just, I just want to make sure we're clear that we're talking about potentially changing a rule. So if the parameters are changed, then the rules would be known and then people would have to now conform to those rules and that parameter. But I just want to make sure if everybody else was on that same page or?
Well, the whole idea of having an advisory committee and then a planning board involved would be to make recommendations. Whether this board wants to say, well, that's where it stops, they can make the decision and allow a house to go on a lot. Or they need to come to council on a case-by-case basis to say, this is what they want to do and we approve it or we disapprove it, but it's up to you guys.
I think we just talked about that for three to 10. Let's B up there.
Well, I'm saying, but I mean, in all cases, you can say special exceptions from under 10 acres. But we're also talking about the 30, 40, 50 acre property that you can't build on it because it's not a farm anymore.
So if we're talking about the income level, and I think that's what I was trying to make sure we're saying.
And the income level opens the door to allow variances.
No, just you'd be able to do it. You wouldn't have to go and get approval if you had more than 10 acres of land.
If you set, if you set that as a standard.
That would be, negate the idea of an advisory committee and planning board approving first.
And there might be other variances that you then come up with as we move forward in the conversation that, that would be their requirement to, to evaluate that, if that's what the group.
Well, my feeling is we're going to come back to where we are now, which is we have a draft ordinance that some people seem to think it's what we're going to do, which it isn't. But can we come up with an ordinance that's going to satisfy, or do we need to go case-by-case basis and just allow these committees to make recommendations?
So I think that's, that's where we're landing now is if, if there's consensus in moving forward with an ordinance that deals with the 50% income level. And if there is, then we'll move forward in that. Counsel Fornia?
I think as a starting point, I'm, I'm seeing that we're starting with B, you know, to create a variance in regards to the parcels of land, three acres to 10 acres, and also the point of, of, you know, income. Those are the two things that I think if we start off with that, and I'm pretty sure about what we would like to do with that, the only issue would be is if you, if we are following federal or state guidelines that say that we have to have more than three acres and if somebody wants to build on those three acres, they won't have enough acres to qualify for that amount that is specified by the feds or, or state. That's the only concern that I have. But I do think that it's fairly simple to think in terms of, okay, we've got two issues here and we could fix those as a starting point and then go beyond that afterward. But just as a clean starting off point.
So maybe we can move the conversation. I mean, we certainly talked about income. We keep seeing, common theme being the state conformity. I'm not hearing other, any other amounts being proposed. So we can move to the discussion regarding that three to 10 acres and how would you like to address that and recommendations that you might have as far as that. I think there was some conversation regarding legacy. And I guess I would ask staff and maybe Eric, if you can just pull up Attorney Costigan's memo as far as legacy, I just want to make sure we're referencing back to that if we're changing property that's being grandfathered. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Un-grandfathering.
That's non-conforming as far as the comment that she had referenced regarding the fact that it is the land and not the individual. End Sunset Plaza. It says, End Sunset Plaza is the name of the title, right? So Eric, you can just, just look through that, make sure you're good on that. We're going to go and start talking about three to 10 acres. So Counsel Hayes.
Yeah, I guess, I guess three points on that. One, I guess I'd like to, again, go back to the, the variance from 10 to 39. Check again, now that we're talking legacy, taking it back to the 60s, where does that number of lots stand under that?
If I can pause you there, Counsel Hayes, when you're talking about legacy, you're talking about properties that were prior to the adoption of the ordinance in the 60s, which has less than 10 acres.
Correct.
But greater than three.
Correct.
That are still owned by the family.
Extended family.
Of those, okay, of that property. So that's what you're referring to.
That, that's one point. Two is going back to if we have two or three adjacent properties that are three acres, I think that's a special focus because I think if we could in some way help to bring those smaller parcels together to get closer to 10 acres, I think that would be, should be encouraged. I think the city should take some part in trying to make that happen. Third, I think that whatever change we make with respect to the 10, three to 10, there's a window of opportunity, that it's not going to be forever, that if we're talking about legacy families, make up your mind. If you're going to move ahead and do something agriculturally, you need a house, get it done because the end of, whatever it is, three years, four years, five years, that's it. We don't want to come back to this subject again.
Great. Anyone else?
I'm just thinking if we start with 10 acres and then realize that that's our starting point and that there may be through individual coming before, whether it's legacy or hardship, but that we start at 10 acres.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Counsel, Mayor?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're leaning towards that mic. I thought you were ready to say something. Eric, do you have something for us regarding her comments?
Just that Mary Costigan had looked at it in the sense that we would be taking something away from a grandfathered property owner, giving a certain group of people a special permission to do something down the road may be problematic, but I think we'd have to run, run through that scenario. Special group meaning somebody with an ancestor that owned that lot in 1964 or whatever the year that was chosen.
So Counsel Lozania mentioned pausing on anything less than 10 acres, focusing on anything greater than 10 acres. Any other comments regarding that? Counsel Walker?
I prefer the B, starting from three to 10. I think the acreage, the small acreages, what people right now that have asked for years to be able to build on is where most of this problem lies. And I think we need to go with a smaller acreage to 10. After that, the rules are pretty much in place unless we're going to change them.
Counsel Fornia, you go.
I agree with that. I think three to 10 acres, you have a large amount of people who have the lower end of that below 10 acres.
All right. Counsel Hayes.
I guess just going back to a chart that we looked at earlier, out of a low country, country residential zone allows for three acres. So again, you know, the gentleman farmer with three acres can have a garden. So that's subsistence farming. And the charts we looked at earlier, and of course, it depends on what we're looking at has been built out, but both RR and what is it, LDCR, both showed acreage at only 20 to 22% being utilized. Now, I recognize that of the three acres, you know, that enters into that percentage, but it tells me that we still have developable land, both in rural residential as well as country residential. And that, you know, getting back to if somebody wants to, you know, have a nice property, still wants to have a garden, they certainly can. And three acres allows that. So I, it, we have to be careful. You know, what we're essentially doing is extending the country residential in large measure, unless we truly tie it to legacy.
So to go back to Counsel Walker, when you mentioned three to 10, were you referring only to legacy or just opening up three to 10?
I don't know anything about the, the length of time that property's been in people's families, so I, I'm not going to say yes to that.
There might be a compromise here. There might be, if you chunk this out into two, two sections, right? There's, we know for a fact that there's 37 buildable lots between three and 10 acres in the city of Auburn. But, and I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Non-conforming, currently non-conforming. It would, it would take a lot of research, I think, on the, on city staff's part to go through deeds, records, to see what's legacy, what's family, different names. It's, it's difficult. I think the burden of proof on that should be the current parcel owner, whether or not they are legacy or not. It takes a lot of stress off. But if you open it up to legacy first, there's a period of time in which they can prove they're a legacy owner. And then let's see what happens there. Because we might find that there's, you know, only three legacy owners left after 60 years.
Counsel Hayes.
Well, I guess there was, I went online, but it seems to me parcels have a date, if there's a date of sale after the 60s, that tells me that it's not legacy. So I.
It could be.
Well, but I think that's, I think that I would like to see, to me, if there's a sale between the 60s and now, I think that needs to be researched to see, is it a family transaction? Then that's okay. But I think that we need to know if there was a sale, you know, during that period, those need to be looked at.
I think the burden of proof falls under the current landowner who's applying for a permit. The financial transactions do take place between family members all the time. And you said it earlier, so, but I think that would be, looking at that as one chunk on legacy, first of all, you have the ones that haven't sold since 1964, that's an easy count. You can eyeball that one because you know they're in the same hands as they were pre-1964. And then the people, you know, after that, the legacy potential would have to prove their legacy. And then we'll see what the true count is. And if you look at this over the course of the next 12 months, you'll find, I think, that this will, you won't, we won't get 37 new farms. I mean, just a, you, you look at this land and you look at a lot of people that just don't want to do anything with it, they just hold it, it's a budding property, they like it for the vista, whatever. I think it's going to be significantly less than that, but it's, it's, the unintended consequences are minimal on this one.
So Mayor, when you talk about phase one, legacy first, you're talking about also including what Counselor Hayes was mentioning earlier, a window of opportunity. You would have a set timeframe.
A window of, absolutely a window of opportunity. Now, I'd like to, there's two windows though. The first window, I think, is from a policymaking standpoint. You want to look at the data that's coming in over the next six months or so, you know, we're basically, you're looking at a poll, if you would. You're trying to find a sense of how many people actually want to build or show interest. You could do an interest letter in the first six months where you're just showing interest that over the next five years, I think you said it's a sunset period, you plan on or your heirs plan on building a farm residence on this land. That will give us some data points to go from.
All right. I'm sorry, Counsel Lozania, did you have something first?
Again, you know, I think this idea of legacy is a really important one. I don't know if we burden the staff with getting into that tiny deal. I think there needs a burden of proof. How do we define family? I think that'll be important in terms of this legacy. I think having a window is a really important thing to do.
Do you have any ideas?
In terms of?
Can you define family and window?
I, I think it's worth a discussion.
Do you have an opinion on it?
What do you mean?
How would you define family? Would it, and one generation?
Adopted children, stepchildren, I mean, there are all kinds of ways that you can do that.
Okay, yeah, that's good. I mean, that's, that's the kind of, that's what we're getting at here is I think it's a dialogue, let's start defining that. And it takes everybody around the table to figure out what the definition of certain things is. A family definition might be completely different from one person to another. I think it's important, but I'd like to see us start defining that now.
Yeah, I'm going to let Karen chime in first before we go back.
First of all, deed research is very, very complicated and very difficult to do. And when you are talking. And when you are talking legacy, like you've already brought up, there are several different family members that you would have to consider. They all have different names. They, it, it's more of a title research than it is just researching a deed and saying, okay, I'm gonna go back from this sale to this sale to this sale. I wonder if they're all related? How are you gonna prove they're all related? They have to bring in paperwork to say, oh, I was related to that fifth buyer back. And who makes that decision? That, I see that as a potential, very, very, not only time-consuming, I don't think it should be the responsibility of staff to do that. And it is the responsibility of the homeowner to prove that they are related back to that original owner. But again, it's going to be whose responsibility to take that information and say, oh, yeah, you've given me enough information, and I can prove now that you are related to that owner that owned it way back in 1940 or 1930. It's definitely for a title research company to have to do that, that's common, that's what they do. And what happens if the chain was broken along the way? It went out of the family for a few years, but now it's back in the family? Or an heir comes back and says, I wanna buy the farm back, and I wanna live there? Or, I wanna buy my land back, but the chain has been broken? You have to think about that as well.
If I could just add a little bit to what Karen was saying, I think it would really be a combination of title research, and the family members would have to have access to birth, death, and marriage certificates to show a path that, we just, we don't even have the legal right to pull some of those unless we were a family member of them.
So the burden of proof has to be with?
I think it has to be.
Has to be.
All right. Counsel Gary?
In today's age, there's a lot of different things that constitute family. What to say, 50 years ago, a family was set up, and they bought the land, and then different people passed away, and somebody came in and became part of the family by taking care of that person for years. Now, they end up with the house, and they've been there maybe 30, 40, 50 years. Are we gonna put them out on their butt and say, I'm sorry, you weren't part of the original family, you don't count? And then there are some situations where, for financial reasons, two people may deeply care for each other, but they cannot get married because of, say, like, social security benefits and things. So there's gonna be unintended consequences.
Counsel Hayes?
It's just two things. Well, in response to that, again, if it's sold out of the family, then that's a sale. You know, that, the family knew at that point that that ended the, that chain. So I think the sale out of the family, that ends it. The other, getting back to window of opportunity, I think the building has to take place within that five years. We don't want a letter of intent that, yeah, 10 years down the road, or 15 years down the road, we'd like to build a house. No. We're talking about people right now that have an interest, supposedly, they've got these three to, less than 10 acres. If we're gonna do something, then it's gotta be done within, within that five years. Again, we don't want lingering letters of intent floating around.
So letters of intent between a window, a narrow window primarily for intelligence gathering, with a commitment before the sunset period of building, or pulling the permit at least, which you have a finite amount of time to finish with a permit.
Counsel Lozania?
Clarification. So if somebody bought a property, not from a family member, but 20 years ago, and it's eight acres, and they have been farming on it, or intend to, but they haven't been able to build a house, where do they get considered in this?
So I think that goes back to what Counsel Walker was referring to. We've moved, we've shifted to legacy, but, so this is a great point. Do we wanna come back to, what do we wanna do with those who are not part of the legacy? And is that a further phase that the, the mayor mentioned phases, but only mentioned Phase One? So, perfect point.
I think, I think we need to consider the non, the non-legacy. There was a gentleman here, his family has 90 acres, his family sold it, he bought it back, there was, and he has 90 acres, and he wants to do something on it. We should hear what he has to say, and consider he wants to take care of his sons. I think we need to uncouple that from this legacy conversation.
Just one, I do, to go back to your saying Phase Two. Phase Two, I think, would be, based upon our hearing as well, is that all non-legacy lots between three and 10 acres need to go to planning board review? We need to authorize variances to be issued based upon planning board review recommendation. That's one idea. Because, we're, again, we're max talking 37 lots here, and each situation's gonna be a little unique. There could be a surveying error, which we know happens. You get a surveying error, and all of a sudden, it's truly 9.9 acres and not 10. Okay, there's that, at a certain point, you gotta have a little bit of gray.
So can we get into, back to the planning board for review? I think it would be important for us to talk about that, because what would they be reviewing? You currently have an ordinance that they cannot build a home on it. But Counsel Titus?
Yeah, that's what I was kinda gonna be drawn to, because one thing the planning board does do is contact the butters, and they look at the situation. Because one thing that has always bothered me whenever there's a change, is that somebody owns a piece of property, and unbeknownst to them, something changes, and now their neighbor can do something they couldn't do before, and they didn't know about it, or whatever. So it's important that the butters know and have a chance to say something about what's going on around them, because it's unfair for that landowner who wants to just sit there status quo, and then something can happen without their knowledge. So just having something, allowing somebody to use their land differently without having some sort of review from the planning board and advisory committee or whatever, and to contact the butters to make sure everybody else have a public hearing, this is what we're going to do, would be the only way to go. And we wouldn't have to worry about legacy. I don't think that should, that's going down, I think, a very complicated, and I think it's favoritism that's not right. I think we should allow, treat everybody equally, and it'll be fair for all. So if it's a legacy property that doesn't conform, and the, or the planning board says, no, this can't happen, it shouldn't happen, legacy or not. It should be, each one should be based on its merits individually, not whether it's a legacy or not.
Zero to 10, zero to 10.
But the three to 10 is what I'm talking about, you know.
Counsel Lozania?
I was gonna say, and so, would there be that window of opportunity? So?
I don't even agree with the window of opportunity, only because I think that at the end of five years, we could be back here again debating the issue of somebody else who just bought the land, and they didn't have a chance to, and blah, blah, blah. I mean?
So you would agree with the window of opportunity?
I don't think there should be. I think it should still, on its merits. If the project's merited, then it should be allowed, and there should not be a end of the line.
Okay.
Are there different opinions from what's already been mentioned? Because I think we can spend a lot of time digging into this, so I just wanna make sure, are there other different opinions regarding, as we're speaking to currently, the three to 10, less than 10, greater than three or greater? We've talked about the Phase One legacy, and we've talked about a Phase Two nonconforming. If I don't hear any other recommendations, what I thought we could move to is, so what parameters would you want to explore for the planning board to make that determination that someone was to come forward and would like to build? That's not part of the legacy, that'll be looked at, but not part of the legacy. What would those parameters look like?
Viable farm plan.
Sorry?
Viable farm plan, and approval of a butters.
You said approval of butters? Any other thoughts? Counsel Hayes?
Well, I think, all of a sudden, we're right back where we started, is that we're getting away from the question of legacy, and, and really trying to encourage a commercial farming activity. I think anything less, if we're gonna do, beyond the three to 10 for legacy, I think then it goes straight to the state program. I don't think we should consider non-legacy properties. People that bought property since the mid 60s, small lots, less than 10 acres, they knew what they were buying.
So I've got your opinion, Counsel Hayes. I think the other opinions were, were mixed. So we have those that only wanna do the nonconforming three to 10, no legacy mentioned at all. We have some that, it seems that legacy, and then also doing something as far as this planning board Phase Two process. So I just wanna make sure we're clear. If we were to set parameters for the planning board, what would that look like? We've talked about legacy already, I think we've worked through legacy, but if we were gonna focus on this, what would that look like? We have viable farmland and approval of butters.
I don't, I don't think we've worked through the legacy, because if this comes back to council, that's gonna be, I hang up, we gotta go to vote. Why don't we figure out now, is that what we want to send to the planning board? I don't feel that this council sitting here wants to send what he is suggesting. I think we should...
So is there consensus on legacy? I'll go around the room, Counsel Walker?
No.
Counsel Young?
Sorry, no. Legacy only?
Just legacy. We'll, we'll talk about the other piece afterwards. Right now, is there any desire to move forward with legacy? Counsel Walker's no, Counsel Mead?
Yes.
No.
No.
Can anybody tally that for me?
Five, two.
Thank you. All right. So if we move to taking a look at the, and again, this isn't a standing vote, doesn't mean that we're not still gonna try to move this conversation as we continue with it regarding that, but right now, let's go back to this nonconforming three to 10. If the planning board was to do a review on each individual, so far, we have viable farmland, and we have approval of butters. Are there other areas that you would want some research, or we need to frame this in a way that it can go back to planning board, right, to be able to look at that? So what other areas would you wanna make sure is being identified? Counsel Hayes?
I brought up the question about contract zoning. I think it's almost, I don't understand it fully, but I kinda get the gist that you're almost contracting to make a change specifically for a particular piece of property, so you're kind of doing it under contract basis.
We'd have to make some adjustments to the ordinance. Our current ordinance doesn't allow for contract zoning, but that's something that I'm not prepared to speak to right now, but at a future meeting, we could certainly talk about how that might look as an option, and what changes would need to be made.
Can you clarify, when you talk about contract zoning, what is that?
So, con, contract zoning is a, it's a developer or a property owner, and the city entering into a contract that meets certain standards that are already established by the ordinance, to deliver a development with certain characteristics, and committing to maintain those characteristics over a long period of time. So it's sort of a, it's a, it's a contract to spot zone, essentially, if the person meets certain standards over time.
And I know, Counsel Titus, spot zoning is something that you were very wary of.
Well, the only thing I was concerned about, and I am, even with the, with the planning board, if it has to, if the planning board has absolute power to make changes, or the ag committee, commission, whatever, together can make changes without coming back to council, that's one thing. But if not, that means every exception that comes up will have to come and be approved by the council on a case-by-case basis, which means for the next three or four years, they could be having a case, almost every meeting, come up with a zoning change or a change of use that the council has to approve.
It's not a zoning change or a change of use, though.
Well, I mean, whatever, an exception, a variant, so whatever, I would, you know, there's a lot of different terms, but the council would still have to approve it, and listen to the workshop, and then, you know, listen to all the cases, everybody, what they wanna do, and then we have to vote as a council, whether we grant this, I wanna build my house on my 30 acres because, but I'm not a farmer. Okay, well...
So the planning?
We're talking three to 10 only?
No, but I mean, we're talking all of them. This is the three to 10, but we're also talking the ag zone in general.
No, we're just talking lots, three to 10 right now.
But whatever we do, I mean, the same thing is gonna happen. If it's just three to 10, that's an exception. But I thought we're also talking about in the ag zone?
So right now, the conversation is regarding the three to 10?
Yeah, but in that case...
Variants within the three to 10.
Right, and those would have to, I mean, I would assume that's the system, is council would have to make the final decision to approve the recommendations of the planning board.
Planning board.
Yeah, on a case-by-case basis. I know spot zoning isn't the name for it, I'd call it something else, but I'd just say, we're just, individual cases will have to be formed.
Variance, it's a variance for nonconforming law.
Lozania?
Just to clarify, I'm sorry, that, so, contract zoning would be approved by the planning board? It would not have to come to the council?
Planning board and city council. So I think, I think, I think there's some, some merit to those, those ideas. I think a conservation easement, like is used for the voluntary municipal farm support program, those two, a contract or an easement, might be mechanisms to, for a person or a property owner to demonstrate their commitment to using the land in a certain way over a long period of time, I think.
Thank you.
Counsel Fornia?
I would agree with that, too. I had said, I think, in a previous meeting, that with our committees that we have, we have so many of them, and this yet another committee to be formed, but through the planning committee and the advisory committee, whatever we're gonna call that, it's important that all of this comes back to the city council, and the city council acts on it. But what's more important is that, that the advisory board and the planning committee have clear marching orders in terms of what their task will be, and that's what you're trying to get from us, Phil, I know you are. And once they know what their, their charge is, then they will perform that, and then bring it back to us. But I don't think that, for the three to 10 acres, I don't think we'll have a, a large amount of houses. I think it's doable. I don't think, you know, as long as you understand that it's the three to 10 acres, and I would like to keep it at that. I think that makes a lot of sense.
So Counsel Young?
I, I was talking to a gentleman a couple days ago, and he built a house, I think it was in rural residential, but he also had some land in the ag zone, too, as well. He told me that he had a signed paper that he wouldn't develop the, the ag portion. Is, do we, is he telling me correctly on this, or?
It doesn't sound familiar. We could look at his specific situation if you wanted to, but...
Okay.
Was that a long time ago?
No, this is just a couple of days ago.
I mean, the occurrence itself? Did that happen many years ago?
I've known this gentleman for quite a number of years. I used to be his prudential agent. Reminded me of that. But he didn't have a beard at the time, so I didn't recognize him right off.
So we've narrowed this down to, one, when it comes to income, the conversation has landed at state conformity. When it comes to the three to 10, we've been focused more about setting up parameters, making it a possibility for an individual to request a variance to the planning board with certain limitations, and obviously, those all aren't gonna be identified tonight. I think a planning board would have a lot of input on that, and, and we can certainly help move that conversation as far as a future workshop. So those are the two areas that we've landed on. The third one, that was brought up by Counsel Walker, and I just wanna circle back to it, because I wanna make sure we're not, we're not losing that, and that was regarding the splitting of the zones. I think Eric, and I think Karen also referenced that it's currently available to split those zones, sorry, split their property under the existing ordinance. Any further discussion on that? I think the number that we provided was that, as long as you still met all these other changes, right, that that could continue to happen. Currently, it's the 50% rule. If you change that, and the income changes, then they would have to meet that new level, but they could split their property, and I think, you know, those numbers, we've already projected out and shared with you in the past. Any further conversation regarding that piece before we move on? Counsel Hayes first?
Well, I think there's a difference in the application or the usage of the state farm program, because that talks about five tillable acres of use of, for agricultural purposes, so it's hard to apply that to maybe the 10, the three to 10, the upper reaches towards 10 maybe. But I think if we're gonna stay with the 10-acre minimum lot size, then I think the full state program then has to apply to the, the 10 acres. So they have to be part of the, the state program, because at that point, you know, they are truly getting into an agricultural use, and they have to meet all the criteria.
Okay. Mayor?
I'll wait, I just have one comment, but I'll wait.
Anyone else?
Mayor? Yeah, you know, again, trying in the spirit of, you know, rational deduction of data that's been presented to us, and, and other data that's out there, tracking of home sales, building and so forth, building permits in the city, and looking at the reality of home construction. If we had this conversation three years ago, I'd be very, 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 I'd be more concerned than I am now, I guess, about people really running to build. But we're seeing now that inventory is stagnant, building has really decreased because of the cost of material. Building has really decreased because of cost of material. And frankly, the lack of contractors out there to build these homes, here and everywhere. So, but I do want to be conscientious of, you know, a lot of people are concerned about the number, what the unintended consequences are. And I do think, and I'd like to have the council talk about it if I could, having a cap, criteria to be determined, having a cap on new farm residences built on lots over 10 acres in length, or size, excuse me, of a number that's mutually agreed upon. It could be 10, could be 12, could be 15, for a period of time. Maybe it's that five-year window. You know, I think for a couple of reasons. A, it would prevent unintended consequences. B, it would also allow us to analyze, you know, how the, and not just us, but really agriculture advisory committee to analyze the impact and the benefit, or not benefit, of what's going on. And at any time during that, that growth period, that testing incubation period, we see that it's wrought with problems. The council, whoever the council is at that period in time, can pull the plug on it, can stop. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but moratoriums on building in certain zones is a prevalent action by other municipal governments? I've read about it in the paper.
Not one that you want to pursue, though.
It's neg- unintended, some unintended consequences there. But, you know, there has been moratoriums in Southern Maine on building of new homes, correct?
Temporary while the community comes up with ways to address it permanently.
And that might be a, if you look at an exhaust valve, a way to say, okay, we're going to look at this, we're going to see if there truly are farming, we're going to analyze the market data, what's the benefit, what's the con? And then if there's a problem, it can be raised to us and we can stop this.
So the mayor mentioned a cap on 10-plus, building, rather, on a 10-plus acre annually. Counsel Lozania?
I'd be wary of a cap. I think, just because of the reasons that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, talking about that there's a real slowdown in building, that we can just see how it plays out and, and then decide. I just think a cap prevents people from being, thinking about doing this. You know, they may say, oh, there's going to be a cap there, so I won't decide to go and look into this and, and do this. And, and we'll see. It, it doesn't seem like there's going to be a stampede from what we can tell from all the data. And so I, I would be wary of a cap.
Counsel Titus?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. I think, I'm a little wary of the cap, but what I would like to see possibly, and this is just throwing it out there, is if we make a change like that, that there's a one or two-year time when the next council has to be given the option to approve an extension or continuance of what's going on or stop it. Rather than a cap. So instead of saying, just so maybe we'll say after a two-year period, then council must have a, a vote to continue that everything is going well or at least to revisit it. Now, maybe that's just adding too much bureaucracy, but it seems to me that might help. So if there are any unintended consequences, the next council or any council could stop the action or make changes.
I hear some noises from staff, but I think maybe that was groaning.
I do that.
I'm not sure.
It's just me.
Maybe that's something we come back to with more information for you as we move forward.
I think a point of sunsetting at some point or a mandatory review period.
Or a review to be, whatever.
Sure. Counsel Young?
A cap or time limit might, might create a gold rush type of fever type of thing. I don't know.
All right. Any other comments? So, if we can try to recap. We've identified two, well, through this process with staff and your input, we've talked about two items from your ideal outcomes to move towards really needing to be focused on at the comp plan level that's coming up. We talked about the ag committee already having a process. It's going to the planning board in October 8th and coming back. And that'll be part of that process. We then further focused on, and we have other comments, obviously, throughout the process. But if we can just look at, we talked about income focusing on the state conformity. And we also focused on the three to 10 acres, which are non-conforming, and creating a mechanism for that to go to the planning board with certain parameters to then come back before the council for final approval. And then there was conversation regarding a cap or some in-two-years review. We haven't identified what that would look like yet, but at least there's some conversation regarding that. We can, we can park that. And if you're moving forward with these items, then that would be the time to bring that forward, moving for, moving beyond that. Anything that we missed tonight that you want to make sure we focus on?
It seems the consensus that a cap is not a good idea.
I, I didn't hear that, but once, once you actually see the actual language, you might, we'll, we'll park it. And then if you want to come back to that later, you can certainly look at it. Counsel Lozania?
In terms of process with this, so you've done a, we've done a good job of sort of sifting through this and coming up with the, the highlights that are actionable. Can you send those to us relatively soon? Because I, I'd like a little more time to think about it and be able to respond collectively to some of them.
We can do that. Counsel Young?
I had a question that's been brought up here a couple of times. Say, if the evaluation on certain properties go up and, and some farmers will go into the state program versus the, what we charge for taxes. And I was just wondering how that actually works. Is that like a homestead type of thing where they get something and then we, we get some money back from the state, but not as much as it actually for the taxes?
Oh, like 63%, yeah. Karen?
So this is, you're, you're asking about the farmland special land use classification?
Yes, I guess so. I didn't know exactly what the name was.
Yep, so if a person, if a taxpayer qualified with the five acres and the income requirement, they can put their land in the farmland designation. That allows the assessor to value their acreage, not the house lot. The house lot and any buildings have to be assessed at market value. The farmland itself is based on a lower price per acre depending on what type of crop you have. You can have pasture land, cropland, blueberries. They've added raising bees, honeybees. So there are several different crops that qualify. And as opposed to what we have right now, which is $800 an acre, it ranges between, say, $325 an acre up to $475 at this point in time. Now, when those crops increase in value, it is at the discretion of the municipality. They have a range that the state suggests for these price per acres. And the assessing department, the assessor, will choose a fair price per acre within that range. So the farmer doesn't pay the taxes upfront because they're being assessed at that lower price per acre. It's not a reimbursement program. It's, you're actually paying lower taxes at the get-go.
So it's, that would change our evaluation citywide? If they enrolled in that?
Well, yes, it would, yep. So right now, we have, and I can't give you an exact number. I, I think it's right around 50, I'm going to say, farms, taxpayers enrolled in the special land use farm designation. So yes, the overall valuation of the city is lower because we're assessing them not at market value.
So, do you know how much that impact is to the, the city with the liability if they all did that?
We, we asked for that, a couple of meetings ago, we asked for that information. I believe you provided, I can't remember where it's stored right now. The 59 and how much value. It's in the, Jill Eastman has it, Jill Eastman sent me an email and I got it. Keep talking.
And that's where the, that's where they say that the evaluation goes down and the revenue sharing would go down because revenue sharing is based on valuation.
Are you looking for a difference at what it would be at market as opposed to what it is now at, at the lower price per acre? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess so. That also has effect on our revenue sharing because revenue sharing is based on, my understanding is, evaluation and a combination of the population. But I don't know exactly what significant liability that would be.
I'm going to, if I could, I'd like to give this to Karen. It's the sheet. Actually, it's from you to Jill and I have it. And maybe you could just explain it to everybody? This is for this here.
Hello. Actually, valuation goes down, then revenue sharing goes up. So if we have more farms enrolled and our overall valuation goes down, that helps our revenue sharing. That's one of the arguments that was made about increasing values in the city will decrease our aid education and state subsidy.
That's with the schools, but...
No, for everything.
Revenue sharing, are you sure of that?
Yeah, that's part of it. One criteria is the actual valuation of the city.
Is revenue sharing and school funding formula are two different things?
Correct.
Mr. Manager?
They're, they're both very complicated.
Just a, a quick comment. Phil's doing a great job facilitating. Now, the revenue sharing, I mean, it's a combination of, of the valuation. Also poverty's part of it, population, so.
And, and the school and state revenue sharing are kind of the same way in terms of, I mean, I know the school has to do with population of students as well, but...
The school funding formula, I think, is, is more complicated than that. And I, I don't feel like I am the person to answer that question.
But I think that if valuation, the city valuation goes down, then it opens the door for more revenue sharing as opposed to the other way.
Yeah, and I don't think we should be afraid, I said this at the last workshop, I don't think we should be afraid of trying to increase valuation for the community. But we need to be doing this with our eyes wide open and have a balanced approach.
Karen?
This is, this is paperwork that was filled out that just tells how many acres are in the farmland designation, the value of those farmland acres. It doesn't give me the difference between what it would be at market value versus in the farmland designation. I certainly, I could get you that, those numbers if you think that would help.
I didn't know if it's significant difference or not.
Well, we have...
But if we're trying to get as much, if we're trying to get as much income as we can...
All right, so if we assume there's, now, this is just, in the farmland designation, you can have woodlands, you can have farmlands. The woodlands within the farmland designation are assessed at the same price per acre as the tree growth program. Okay, so, right now, just the farmland acres, there's 1,619 farmland acres in the farmland designation. You could make an assumption that those 1,619 acres are being assessed on average at $350 per acre. Then you could turn around and say, okay, what's the difference between that? And if we were assessing and it's straight up ag at 800 an acre? And that would give you a little bit of an idea on the loss in tax dollars between the two. I mean, that's just a really rough estimate on just the farmland acres. I certainly could go more in-depth and get you better numbers if, if you would like. But that gives you a rough idea of, I mean, you're losing half, basically, or more than half in valuation.
Are you concerned about losing direct property tax dollars, Counsel?
I'm just, I'm, I'm just concerned with the moving parts, what, what the gains and losses are.
Gain's probably in the home, the new home.
And as far as it, it, its effect on revenue sharing and county tax and things like that, that would take a while to figure that out.
It's sort of a complicated formula and I, I may have one time been misinformed that if we have a lower valuation and a lower population, maybe that's why we get less revenue sharing than the worst. But I thought it was a population plus evaluation had a playing role in that.
Counsel Gary?
Thank you. Now, I'm, I'd like a little bit more information on this, so please don't take off.
Oh, no, I'm coming.
Okay. If they, if a farmer, a landowner enters into this program, they get a discount of like $350 an acre, right? And then you said, once their crops come in and they can, you have to assess a value of the crops, does that mean their taxes will go up based on what income they have from the land?
No, um, let me clarify that again. That price per acre that they are receiving is based on what the state's parameters are. They've done their research and they say, okay, for a blueberry crop, the average for Andrus Goguen County is between, and I'm throwing numbers out because I don't, between $325 and $475 per acre. So the state is setting the parameters. That's when the assessor chooses what to use for a price per acre and apply it to those crops. Not when they're harvested. It's when it goes into the program, they're telling me, this is what I have, and then we assess the price per acre. Does that answer that? Okay.
All right. So we have identified a few areas. Talked about areas that are going to take a more detailed and future approach to these topics. Now, I'd like to circle back to next steps. We've been at this for three hours. I think this is a good breaking point. However, what we'd like to, if, as long as everybody's in agreement, but we'd like to talk about what's that next step as we look at preparing the state conformity requirement and the three to 10 acres with identifying those areas for the planning board. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if you have any comments regarding that?
Phil, you're doing such a great job. I think I should just be quiet. I think the council's had a good discussion. I appreciate that. Do you feel like you have a consensus on these items that Phil has mentioned? I know, I think there's a majority that do. Do you want to take action at the next council meeting or the one after that?
Action being what?
Have a first reading?
Yeah, action defined. I would think that we have, we need to just to look at it kind of in a final state, digest it. This is my personal opinion. Digest it, have another workshop and talk about it after we've had a week. And after, we can see it in black and white, too, and see what the actual impact and the final product is.
So a workshop at the next council meeting, which is next Monday?
Would it be reviewed by the planning board, our fin- our final draft? Before we do any kind of a...
Certainly could. You could invite the planning board chair and members of the planning board and if you wanted to.
They had requested being more, and I think, Mr. Manager, remember, they had requested making sure that they were more involved and understood the steps that we were taking. So I would suggest, I don't know if it'll slow us down, but...
October 7th is our meeting.
I think it's important that they, they're kept in the loop.
Next council meeting is October 7th. The next one following that is October 21st.
How about the next planning board meeting? Should be, isn't it the following Tuesday?
October 8th.
October 8th, so, well, the day after our meeting. Is it possible, has their agenda been set yet, Audrey?
Agenda is pretty darn full. So it would be really tough to have this kind of a deliberative conversation during that time period.
Is it possible to invite them to our planning board, or, excuse me, our meeting on the 7th? At short notice, it's a week.
That would, that would be tough to, to make it happen and to get the participation from the full board. We could make the invitation, but it might be tough to bring them all in in that time clock.
So you have currently on the draft agenda for the 7th, we've allocated an hour to talk about ag zone into the workshop. If you'd like, you could talk directly regarding state conformity at that workshop and focus on that language. And I guess as staff can certainly talk about what that would look like as that would be presented. And then that would allow you time to put the three to 10 acre at the October 21st meeting with proper notice to the planning board.
Does that work for the staff?
Planning board loves to work a lot anyways. They need to have more than one meeting a month.
I'm going to have to take the staff out for ice cream a couple of times.
Listen, if you're, if people are looking at me, I'll speak. Let's write it up. Let's review it next week. Feel comfortable with it. Get it out to planning board. And let's forget about post, post-planning board review.
So I'm sorry, you're saying that we'd ask the planning board to look at it on the 8th?
Look at it as, you know, as soon as they possibly can within October. Did I mishear that?
So what I had mentioned, and we can certainly change that. I had only mentioned to try to stay with your dates would be that the next workshop, we would just focus on state conformity. We would certainly provide you information materials relating that so you could be more informed on those requirements. The October 21st, meaning you could invite the planning board to a joint workshop to discuss the three to 10 acre and those areas that you have set up for parameters. Why don't we, I'm going to put this up to a consensus vote again with the...
Why don't we, um, I'm going to put this up to a consensus vote, again, with a thought process of, you know, of fresh in mind, and you were, I mean, I truly believe after tonight we're on a, a roll of some sort. Why don't we see a, a planning board can do a special workshop, joint workshop on the 14th, or a standalone workshop on the 14th for their review, prior to our review?
The holiday on the 14th.
The following week.
We do? It's not on my calendar. Oh, wait. I can't even pronounce that word. Um, 14th is a holiday.
You don't call it Columbus Day anymore.
Well, I guess not.
Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Kind of holiday to us.
So, uh, council, what do you think? I mean, you're on a roll here. We got the 21st, we can do a joint meeting then. The 7th almost seems, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we could ask the city council in an email, can't, not the city council, I'm sorry, the planning board, if they can be available to join us on the 7th, then action on the 21st. And if they can't join us on the 7th, if they can't get a quorum or majority participation on the 7th, then we push it to the 21st. But I think the attempt to ask the chair and to ask, you know, the rest of the members to make themselves available between 5:30 and 6:30 on the 7th is one worth asking.
Phil? Sorry, Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would feel more comfortable if we pushed out for a vote, our forming of this commission and the ground rules first, and then have, allow us more time to consider all our options and the planning board to go through everything we suggested, and they might have come up with other things. Because I'm not comfortable of, like I said, hasty judgment legislation. Granted, we've come a long way tonight, we came away last week, but your committees and all the other committees, they had a lot longer than we have had now to push this forward. And I'm not known for putting out crappy material, so I want us to be able to do due diligence.
Any other comments?
Chair.
Phil Walker.
I think it's doable.
I feel that the, I feel that we need to let the city people put this together for us so we can read it before we send it on to anybody. I, I want to see the details that we're talking about with the three to 10, and the process that we're going to go through here.
Do you'd like to see October 21st?
I don't want a committee telling me what we, what we said we want to see with three to 10. I want us to look at that and, and let them come to our meeting if they can, and if they can't, we'll fit them in, meaning the planning board. But I, I want to see something that we're thinking that we want to put together, and then we can possibly get it out to whoever.
Okay, that makes sense. So, let me ask this to Peter and Phil. Is it possible that staff can format what consensus have been made tonight into an ordinance format, and then present for, during our 60-minute workshop, and then from there we can decide further action?
You saying for October 7th?
Yeah. I'm going to type it up.
I'm going to say not for October 7th.
You want me to try?
The staff have done an incredible job over the last two weeks.
Not they have.
And they're...
Can they bullet point it at least so it looks, again, a summarization of consensus points? It doesn't have to be in the appropriate legalese language.
I, I'd be nervous about putting something like that out, and I'm just, I'm just curious, it would be one additional week if we met collectively with them on the 21st. It would allow us to get something that was close to where we want to be with it, to review it, and then it would allow them to look at it as well before the 21st.
I'd like to get the bullet points out of the way prior to that, at least, minus the legalese language. I mean, I do anticipate that staff would work on legalese language, the language of it, the official language throughout this period of time. But the sooner a product can be out there for everybody to review is going to be critical. Uh, the momentum is there, and that legacy knowledge is there. And it's not about rushing, okay? This is about process. But bullet points of everything that Phil has in his notebook right now is, I think, fairly simplistic to do, and I'm not talking about the actual ordinance language to be clear.
So Council lasagna had asked for that, so we'll, we'll develop that, and I'll work with staff and make sure we capture what's been said, and then we'll make sure that that's available.
And then on Monday, as we're looking at the three to 10 acre rule, we can continue to inform the actual ordinance language at that point.
So, to be clear, Monday, October 7th, what I first mentioned was, do you want, you know, that would, that workshop, do you want that on three to 10 acre, or do you want that on state conformity?
I, I think this needs to be on state conformity.
Okay.
This has to be on state conformity. I think we have consensus, and there's no need to revisit the three to 10 acre.
I think there is.
Well, let's ask, I, I'd like to go around the room and find out from the council.
For transparency's sake, I think, as we look around the table, there's three counselors that have property in the ag zone. So I think it does affect our thinking, our focus, and so forth. So I think that there's a need to go to the ethics committee for a resolution as to, particularly this three to 10, and the question of legacy.
Hold on, hold on, now we're throwing an ethics committee. I mean, who, can I ask, I guess, full disclosure, if you know, who are the three counselors that have land in ag zone? Your backyard, you own a developable, potentially developable property, who's the other counselor?
Two.
Two counselors and, and yourself, Mayor. I think is what...
But remember, my land...
I think is what you're saying, Council Hayes, is that what you're saying?
Are you owning two? You own land?
You have backland, Holly has backland, I think Leroy has...
Mm-hmm. Let's be clear, none of the bullet points we've talked to affect or change or modify the need for road frontage. My land has no road frontage and is unable to have any because it is blocked from any major road by another parcel. So it's impossible, under any proposed ordinances, for me to do anything with my backyard except mow it, which is what I've been doing.
I didn't want to...
And I think Council, Council lasagna, well, when you bring it up, Bob, you have to, you know, be honest with it.
That's right.
And I think Council lasagna, since this is all up, I think Council lasagna, you're in the exact same situation, I know you are, as I am. So there is no road frontage, it's still, just like the vast majority of people who own parcels, backyards.
Correct.
And it's under 10 acres, it couldn't even be split.
And I agree, but I, I brought this issue to our manager in private, but I, it does boil down to one, but I think we still need it to go to the ethics committee. Leroy, I think you have two parcels, one you bought in 2013 and one in 2017, that could be developable properties under the three to 10. And I think that is an issue that needs some clarification.
On that point, since you've raised the, the issue, Council Hayes, I have talked to our attorney, Michael Malloy, about it. I spoke to Michael about it. Michael is going to get back to me, let me know his thoughts on it. I don't know that it has to go to the ethics committee, but I'd like, I would like to have Michael's opinion before we proceed in that direction, if that seems reasonable to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as the record states that, I didn't even know I had ag land until May of this year, so...
Mr. Mayor, I think the vote was five to two, and if I abstained from it, it's still four to two. It's still passable, so, Mr. Hayes, would you like to try to find another excuse of why we shouldn't do it?
So if we can...
No, I think that is a reason why I am concerned, and that's why, because I don't think you're the only individual, Leroy. And that's why I say, from the beginning, we were trying to work with those people that truly were a legacy.
So I think we have a process that's going through with that, and so we'll allow that process to come back before the council with a, a report from our city solicitor. So we have currently an hour workshop on the 7th that will talk about state conformity.
By 30 to 6:30?
And, well, it's on the agenda, I'm not sure where it'll land on the agenda, but we certainly have one hour that we've, we've allocated. October 21st, we'll invite the boarding, uh, planning board to come to your workshop meeting and to discuss the three to 10 acres. Hearing nothing further, then we'll close this workshop.
Three to 10 acres.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask you a question. Back when, 1964, 62, 63, do you think when they passed these rules that are in place right now in the agricultural forestry slash agricultural land, that there was no farmers involved in that vote?
There was a ton of...
Do you believe that?
I wouldn't be able to answer that.
There was. Otto Wallingford is one that comes to mind.
Do you think they should have had to go to an ethics committee to get the okay when they put this whole thing together? They're the ones that put these rules in place that we're battling over today. I'll wait for a response from our chair, thank you.
Hearing no objection, we'll close this workshop. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
And there will be a summary of the bullet points for next Monday. I think we can do that without great difficulty, so...
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.